Other youth sports and other local basketball teams have many basketball tournaments around the area. When it comes to wheelchair basketball, there's only a few within the state, and so they have to travel at far distances. It's a lot for the families. It's an expensive sport with all the wheelchairs. So it's a lot to put this on and get officials. So the more that we can support Dairyland Sports as we support these events like this, with funding, with volunteering, and just coming out to support these amazing athletes.
Hello, this is Frank Caruso, producer of Oregon Life, and welcome back to a brand-new episode as we revisit The Optimist Recipients of a continued series where we visit the teachers who have nominated the students and the students. I'd like to thank again the teachers that are participating in voting for the students, to Sherri Pollak, who really organizes all this and makes it happen for our community, meeting these teachers and these young students. Again, a shout-out to Thor Horse Insurance, who has been a continued contributor to OCA Media and Oregon Life. And if you would like to donate in any way, visit our donation page on the web or contact Paul at ocamedia.com. And if you'd like to sponsor a show like Oregon Life, or Two Tickets, please, or Let's Talk Oregon, or any of our sporting events and many other programs that we produce at OCA Media, please contact Paul, as I said earlier. So enjoy this episode of The Optimist Recipient here on Oregon Life.
Hi, my name is Tracy Leiter. I'm an OHS Science teacher, and I've been at Oregon for little over 20 years now. I've known about the Optimist Program for nearly the entire time I've been here, I think. And every year, I really struggle to figure out who is deserving of this fantastic recognition. And this year, there was absolutely no hesitation. I nominated Reed as soon as we got the email to nominate students. At that point, I think I had only had Reed in class for about three weeks, maybe four weeks. But I was really impressed with the dedication that Reed had to not only academic studies that they were engaged in, both here on campus and also up at the university, but also all of the extracurricular things that Reed has going on in terms of jobs and doing Model UN and just being an all-around, super-positive person. So I put the recommendation in that same day, and I was super happy to hear that Reed was one of the recipients. One of my favorite, like, daily activities as we are getting ready to start AP Environmental Science is to take a look at a species of the day. And Reed is very engaged in that work, and it seems super excited about it, almost as excited as me, which makes it very much fun. But also, Reed will notice things in the classroom. Reed will notice if you got a new dress, or you are doing your hair differently, and will make sure to point that out to students. And students will really appreciate the effort that Reed puts in to make connections and notice what's going on in the classroom and really make those connections and celebrate what is going on in our classroom.
Oh, my gosh, I love it. It's the best. Just sign right here. I love your coat. It's so cute.
Thank you. I barely knew you today, though.
Hi, my name is Reed Landay. I was a recipient of the Optimist Club Award. And the story of how I got it was, I was actually in one of my college classes on my email when I totally was not supposed to be. And I got the email saying Ms. Leiter had nominated me for it. And at that point, I had only had Ms. Leiter as a teacher for a few weeks for AP Environmental Science. And don't get me wrong, I had absolutely fallen in love with her teaching style. But it was quite surprising to see she was the one that nominated me. So I texted my dad, and me, my dad, and my brother went to the Optimist Club meeting together. We got the plaque. It's actually hanging above our fireplace right now. And I overall feel very honored to have been nominated. One of the really cool things about going to the ceremony is, we were immediately greeted, me, my dad, and my brother and I. We were immediately greeted by several people, and several people already seemed to know me. And so throughout the meeting, me, my brother, and my dad were listening to the creed and to everybody do their little spiel's. And my dad and brother especially were immediately hooked. And so going to that meeting actually made them want to live by the creed and possibly join. They ended up being too busy, but again, we still have it above the mantle, and we try to live by it.
Okay, we'll get started. It's five o'clock. A call to order the Village Board of Oregon from Monday, May 20, 2024. Item two, roll call, please.
Beshin?
Here.
Higgins?
Here.
Kirchdorfer?
Here.
Manke?
Here.
McDaniel?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
And Van Kampen?
Here. Item three, approval of May 6, Village Board meeting minutes, if correct, corrections of mistakes, if any, recommendation, motion to approve. Jason and Tim. Comments, questions, corrections. Hearing on all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries, thank you. Item four, public appearances, comments, and communications. Item for discussion and/or possible action. A oath of office and swearing-in for Police Officer Cody Offord. Would you like to come up?
Cody, if you'd like to come up. Is it okay?
Please. Anyone else?
Might want to grab one of those mics.
Yeah, anyone else that wants to come up, too, is fine.
You could each have one if you'd like.
That's a great idea.
That's a good idea, yeah. Just kind of stand there.
So before we begin swearing-in, just to briefly talk to you about Cody. You may recognize him. He actually worked for the Bergamont Golf Course for quite a period of time. He is local to our area. He is from the Stoughton and Edgerton area. And we hired him back in January of 2024 and put him through the Police Academy with Black Hawk Tech. This last Friday, I attended his graduation along with Lieutenant Schaub, and we're happy to bring him forward today. So I'll move forward into reading your oath here. If you could raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Cody J. Offord.
I, Cody J. Offord.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
Sorry. I do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Wisconsin.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Wisconsin.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the Village of Oregon.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances with the Village of Oregon.
The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department.
The rules and regulations of the Oregon Village of Oregon Police Department.
And the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics.
And the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a sworn police officer of the Oregon Police Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties of my office as a sworn officer of the Village of the Oregon Police Department.
I will assume my duties as of January 12, 2024.
I will assume my duties as of January 12, 2024.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Thank you. Congratulations. Welcome. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay. Let's see, a public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items both on and off the agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item, with a three-minute maximum per speaker. We have registered Bonnie Thiel to speak.
Thank you for the time. Can you hear? Okay? Yeah, that's right. Okay. So there was an email that was sent, and I think it was included in the packet. It was sent last week, and I thought it just might be a little helpful for a little more history and information to see what can be done, if anything. And this is involving a liquor license that is not being applied for by us, so I'm not representing myself as a liquor license applicant. We're a landlord at a property at 135 South Main Street, which was formerly occupied by Ziggy's, who was holding a liquor license until December 31 of this year. We worked hard to get a new tenant into that building, of which we have, and they're interested, obviously, in a liquor license. The expense of the license can be, you know, either $10,000, or it can be the lower tier. And, you know, when we look at the expense that a restaurant puts into getting into the community and providing a great opening for the village, you know, is a lot. So that's kind of why I got involved in this. And there was some, a lot of information that I asked about to help them get through this process. And, you know, that was through the, through joy mostly with the village. And at one point, she told me that, well, if a license hasn't been used by ordinance, this is for a three-month period, that the village can revoke the license. So on further discussion, you know, Candy clarified that, that it isn't obligated to. And I believe the ordinance may read that it says that they may revoke it, not will revoke it, you know. And we get into the may-will verbiage in ordinances, which sometimes, you know, that's another discussion. But anyway, we're hoping, and not as a penalty to the current license holder, you know, or to discount, you know, his business in any way. It's not operating. It hasn't since December. It's not being used. And I would think that having it available to another applicant would be beneficial for the community, for the village, and for the business, obviously. So that was what precipitated my communication. I understand there's no guarantees on any applicant. You know, I know they have to go through the vetting process, they have to go through the background checks, there have to be inspections. I know that the liquor license renewal period is coming to an end as well, at the end of June. But if it meant that this license were available, even if not to this applicant, but to any applicant, you know, why not? You know, there's no purpose in it being held out there right now. So the current holder of the license hasn't been responsive and has not, you know, surrendered the license, but there's no reason why it should be, shouldn't be revoked. Why not? You know, like I said, even if it meant, yeah, even if it meant a couple of weeks of maybe opening a little bit earlier because it did, because it was available, why not? So that's what I had to say.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments? Moving on, thank you. Item five, approval of vouchers in the amount of $1,46,107.61. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. Decent time. Comments, questions? Lynn?
I just have two line items that I just could use some context for. First is 12731, a musical performance. Guessing that's for Sounds of Summer.
For Laura Doherty? See you in the center, maybe.
No, it's not today.
Yeah, Leanne's not able to be here tonight, but I don't know all the names of the musicians, but it looks like the amount that we pay for the Sounds of Summer concerts, and I know we pay most of those folks ahead of time.
Okay.
So that tracks, but I can clarify if that's different at the next meeting. I can let you know.
No, I would assume as well, I just wanted a little context if someone was looking at this and wondering if we're putting on musicals at the Village Hall.
At the Public Works Garage every Friday. A real hit amongst the guys.
Be there.
And then my other one is 13148, which is a zoo program, which also might be at the Public Works Garage.
That's more like it, actually.
That's a senior segment.
That is, okay.
Yep, that's a program we've scheduled through the Henry Villas Zoo, and they require a prepayment, and then the Council on Aging will reverse the village.
Great, thanks.
Anyone else on the vouchers? Hearing none.
I just want to comment that my eyes got blurry between page 17 and page 29 of U.S. Bank Credit Cards. It's like, wow, that's a lot of pages. Anyway, just, that's a lot of pages.
Yes, it is.
We do that, we get considerable money back.
Yeah.
By cash-back programs.
Right, yeah. And that was, and that was two months' worth of credit card bills. It was March and April, so typically, it's not that long.
Yeah, exactly. Typically, it's not that long. And that's why I was like, wow.
And I believe it was the March one where we bumped up against our limit, so I had to call and get that increased by $50,000 for the month because we had used it so heavily, so, which isn't a bad thing. And they actually, I just got an email last week, they increased our credit limit to $225,000, so that should help in the future.
Thank you, please. Anyone else on the vouchers? Okay, we have a motion second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item six, consent agenda, staff recommendation, motion to approve. Sorry. Oh. Yeah, that's my usual.
Sorry. Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
Beshin?
Yes.
Van Kampen?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Manke?
Yes.
It's just because you had too much celebrating last week.
That's it. Thank you very much. Okay, let's try it again. Consent agenda, staff recommendation, motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Item A through J. Any promotion, first of all? Well, let's go, Carleen and Leanne. Questions, comments on these items? Carleen?
I want to say that this is the shortest vacancy we've ever had on a committee. We had someone who needed to resign, and within a week, we had someone fill the vacancy on the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee.
Can I, like, rub your head or something for luck so that I can get some transportation people? After the meeting, I washed mine here.
Tom?
Did you? I just had one question or one point to make on the relationship to the interim financing for well number three. That's just a interim financing arrangement that we're looking to fund that through the SDLWP, and eventually, that will give us a financing cost of half of our normal financing costs, if that's approved. But we have to have that prior approval so that there's financing in place.
Great. Anyone else? Okay, we have motion second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, report of committees, items for discussion on possible action. A, Oregon Area Fire EMS District Commission. One, a labor agreement between the Oregon Area Fire EMS District and Firefighters Local 311 for the period of January 1, 2023, to December 31, 2026. I wonder if anyone would speak on that. Jason?
So they, this is a contract between just a few of our service personnel and the chief and the fire commission, and different members of the fire EMS district have been working on this since before my time on the board. And I'm thrilled with that we came up with a compromise between the two sides that everybody seems happy with, so that means we can have a year off before working on 2026. So any questions about it, I can answer.
Do you have a rate or effective rate that we have increased the cost or approximation?
Not off the top of my head. It's, the numbers are, I'm sorry.
Carleen?
So I'm assuming that since this goes from December 2023, that there'll be some prorated payback to, I mean, January 2023 for?
There is back pay for the?
For those folks.
For the previous time with people who are still with the Fire EMS District.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it won't apply to anybody who's left.
Correct.
Who worked part of the time but isn't still here.
Okay, let's get a motion on that table, please. Someone, Jason and Tim. I would just like to mention that commissioners that served on the Fire Commission, three people that particularly, and I know Jason and Tim also worked on this, but three people in particular worked hard negotiating this contract. And as you can see, since we're a year and a half late, there's substantial investment of their time. And that is Derek Bilo, representing the village, Kate Cladding from the Town of Oregon, and Deanna Zentner, all, over the course of the lengthy negotiations, represented the commission. And I just wanted to mention that they're, I appreciate their efforts. So we have a motion and a second. Any more further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries, thank you. Item B, Planning Commission Ordinance Number 2407, an ordinance amending the official zoning map and approved, approving an amended general development plan for 6.24 acres of property located northwest of the intersection of Peterson Trail and Jefferson Street, known as the Villas, Highlands, and Netherwood, from SR 6, single-family residential and planned development overlay to TR 6, two-family residential and planned development overlay. Commissioners staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Amanda? And Lynn? And please, did you have something to add on this? Pretty straightforward.
Yep, just happy to take any questions if there are any.
Hearing on all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries, thank you. Item, let's see here, 7C, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, one, community conversation initiative.
Yes, so there are two things that the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee have been discussing, and one is having, hosting facilitated community conversations. And we've, we've batted around several different topics that we think would be interesting. What we've arrived at is, what do we mean when we say "small-town feel"? To real, because we're doing a lot of planning, we're doing a lot of talking about that, we hear "small-town feel" a lot. And so to just have a conversation with residents, this would be in the fall, possibly at the library, although we have not secured that space yet, we had, we've had some conversations about that. And it would be facilitated by trained facilitators to get at, what are people thinking when they say "small-town feel"? And so just wanted to inform the board about that conversation, get any input. I would, you know, I'd love to entertain questions if you have them, that it has not been finalized, it's just, this is more informational, because, as I said, we're not planning to do this till fall. And if you have thoughts about it and want to discuss them further, if you want to do that here, that, you know, I'm not necessarily thinking that we take that time here, but we would certainly welcome that. Or email me questions that, you know, if you're watching and you have ideas about this, please let us know. That's one thing. The other thing is, as we, and the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, think about making the Village of Oregon the most welcoming and inclusive place that we possibly can, we really would like to hear from community members about what that feels, what living here feels like to them. Everybody from young people to elderly people, people of all genders, sexual orientations, colors, religions, et cetera. And so we had an initial conversation with the folks at Nehemiah who have done the Black History for a New Day course and are working with staff on diversity equity and inclusion training sessions. I'm not part of those, so I don't really know what is involved. They don't actually do these, but they gave us a lot of resources and things to think about. There are some programs through the Mortgage Center and through the Department of Human Ecology at the university, intern students who... And so we had, uh, an initial conversation with the folks at Nehemiah who have done the Black History for a New Day course and are working with staff on diversity, equity, and inclusion, uh, training, um, sessions. I'm not part of those, so I don't really know what is involved. They don't actually do these, but they gave us a lot of resources and things to think about. There are some programs through the Mortgage Center and through the Department of Human Ecology at the university. Intern students who might be available as part of a project that they're doing to help us with something like this. And so the, this is just informational to let the board and, uh, the community know the kinds of things that we're thinking about and would love input, uh, feedback, ideas. Uh, we wanna make our committee relevant because we want this to be a great place for everyone to live, thrive, work, play. Thank you.
Okay, questions or comments for Carleen?
I didn't, I didn't get the timing on the survey.
There's not timing on the survey. We're having conversations about doing a, a possible survey. And we talked with the folks at Nehemiah. They do not do community surveys. They do staff surveys or, uh, organizational surveys. But they gave us a bunch of resources and Mortgage and the Department of Human Ecology were two that we're gonna be checking in with. And we'd love to, you know, if you're interested, have ideas or resources, please let us know.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Carleen. Item eight, unfinished business, items for discussion, possible action. A, Senior Center Building Project. One, presentation and report on community engagement process from Patrick Stern of Tri-North Builders.
Evening, everybody. Uh, Patrick Stern, Tri-North Builders.
A little closer.
Yeah, yeah, pull it close to you. Okey-dokey.
There you go.
Uh, really happy to be here, finishing up this, uh, section of work on the senior center. Uh, last time we were before you, we had gone through sort of the sweet science of, of what space should be there. And then, um, this was sort of the, the fuzzy math of figuring out, does this make sense for the individual community of Oregon? So, starting with, working with, um, feel free, Jeff, to go to.
You just beeped me.
Yeah, you, you beep again, that's totally fine. We can keep going.
Keep going?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
So kinda where we've been, right, space needs, site analysis, obviously, mainly through the village. What we kinda proposed looked good. You guys said, yep, makes sense. Then we went and presented to you guys with a plan, saying, okay, here's what we'd like to talk to the community about. Said, great. It was essentially a series of five in-person meetings and then an online, um, follow-up about the gymnasium specifically. So I wanna dive in a little bit to the results, which I hope you guys love light reading because this is the entirety of it. Which is not necessarily cogent for everybody here, but it's gonna be great information for designer to come and take a look at and say, okay, here's how we make what a senior center should be, makes sense for the village. So, having said that, if you wanna keep going on the next one.
There you go.
Um, so yeah, it was five in-person, what we called kind of charrettes. Sort of colloquially or sort of informally, we kind of titled them, you know, first one was for the, the council. The second one was for volunteers, the third one was for users, and then two to the public. Obviously, none of that was walled off. It was for anybody who showed up, could answer at any of them. I would have expected personally, based on my kinda history doing some of this, um, so. Hold on, I'll hold off on the, on the, on how good a result you guys got. Then we had the, a paper version for those who could not attend, which, Rachel, remind me how many of those we had. It was only a handful, correct? Yeah. Um, and then specifically because we presented this off, option of, is there a, a, not just senior center component, is there this sort of gymnasium component that makes sense? We had the community-wide gymnasium survey. And if you flip to the next slide, I wanna, this is where my meat is. So in person, a hundred and eight, I would have thought thirty, tops. Of those hundred and eight, two people seemed sort of hesitant about the project. That number is indicative to me that we're on the right track. I mean, I've never really seen that little opposition to sort of a major capital project in my time doing this sort of stuff. Yeah, there wasn't really a surprise. We asked for flavors, we asked for, you know, are these the things that you guys wanna see? What do you wanna see, right? If I go to, sorry, let me flip to a results page just to kinda give you, it's not in there, but, you know, indoor walking track, balance equipment, coffee bars, amenities, right? These are the top three. These were things that we sort of thought we'd hear back. Uh, but we did a lot of thinking early on in the processes, how do we ask the questions in a way that we're not gonna just get responses that we want? But that we get real responses. And both fortunately and unfortunately, we didn't get things that we didn't expect for most of our questions. I think that just goes to show kind of, there's a lot of, you know, desire for sort of the traditional senior center experience. But in a more modern way than can currently be offered in the space that's, that's there. Even aesthetic, right? We threw out some choices for what do you want this to look like, right? Which would be great value for a designer. Light and bright was by far the biggest answer. Anything retro or whiz, musical or historic or anything sort of, sort of out of the ordinary, not a huge response for those, which, again, I'm not totally shocked by, but it, we wanna make sure that it fits the community that it's supposed to be in. Age-wise, I think it was basically where I thought it would be, it was mostly seventy-plus. But to be honest, I didn't think we'd have anybody under forty, and we did. Which again, shows that this is a project that people are aware of and are, again, supportive because it's not like you had a bunch of people who say, well, I'm never gonna use it, come out in, in opposition, so. Yeah, I mean, it was just a really nice process overall. Weather cooperated for the most part, so we got lucky there too, but, you know, we, we've seen board members there, and I think you can kind of, you know, echo that, right? Where it was really good conversations, we were able to do a couple of things with them, right? One was to ask the questions. But another one was to educate if people wanted to come and learn more, and I think we spent quite a bit of time, both as staff and consultants, kind of just going through, okay, here's the thought process, here's why, here's how much work the board and staff and everyone is doing to get to this place. So it really just went really well from the charrette side. I don't know if you guys have more to add on that part of it, but.
I would just say, we were really pleased with the turnout.
Yeah. And we say about a hundred and eight because we didn't force people to check in or write their names on surveys, so if they skip the survey side, they may have done some of the work, but not all of it. But again, I think that's way more turnout than I had anticipated, so we got great feedback. On the online gym survey, um, eight hundred and twenty-six responses, that's, that was insane to me. I really did not think that you would see anything close to that. I thought maybe two hundred at most. So, one of the vectors that we went through for the gym survey was the school district, so I think that obviously bumped our numbers. But even there, I mean, busy parents don't always bother to fill them out if they don't feel like it's something that makes any sense. There is not a real consensus in the gymnasium, but what I will say to you is, what I got out of the sort of, um, distillation of that is, you know, there's options for the board to make some decisions during design for what is the use that's gonna impact the village the most? Is it, you know, um, you know, it's really just what kind of courts you wanna put on there, right? Is it pickleball? Is it, um, basketball? What makes the most sense and what's the price gonna be? So I think that's something to work, when you have a designer on board, to kind of go through that process to go, okay, here's the responses we got. Here's the cost of that, but it's not gonna be a huge difference. Nobody's, it wasn't overwhelmingly three million dollar embanked, um, sprint track for track and field. It was just sort of the regular sort of, you know, pickleball, basketball, badminton, flex court kind of results that we thought we were gonna get. Again, there was plenty of opportunity to say, no, that's not what we want. But ultimately, that's what we got back, which would make sense in track. I mean, Madison area sports commission will tell you, you guys could put in ba- eight basketball courts, you could have revenue floating out of the skies at you, right? So rec is a real area of need, and I think the survey sort of, um, highlights that as, as being true. So it's really just sort of, you've got a lot of data in your back pocket now for when you go with a designer to say, here's what we wanna do. And then I think I'll let you guys talk a little bit about those potential partnerships with that space if you want to, and kinda where we're at there, if that makes sense.
I can start on that. So as mentioned in our memo, and I think was mentioned in our community engagement plan back in the fall, there were several community groups, um, nonprofits, as well as, um, community and rec office of the school district that had expressed interest over the last year or two, um, in potentially partnering and, um, co-locating with a new senior center. And so we did pursue, um, conversations with all of those groups and kinda had a, got a better understanding of their space needs, um, access needs, uh, things like that. And most of those users, uh, needed more space and really could be easily accommodated on the site. Might be a great future adjacent use, like a preschool or something like that. But just given the site constraints, kind of maxing out of the village-owned property there, um, unlikely that those would really fit well, um, given our current direction of our concept plan. One community partnership option that seemed to potentially make sense, and, um, we've had just some preliminary conversations with and wanted to check in with you before, um, those conversations might continue. But the community ed and rec office, um, run by Amy Miller at the school district, and she is a staff of, I believe, four folks total. They're currently kind of buried in the school district office, the, the main district office off, um, Grove there. And there's definitely an interest for them to have more of a storefront kind of presence to the community, for people to come in and not only register for classes and events, but also potentially check out snowshoes or a picnic kit with, you know, badminton or disc golf, you know, discs or whatever it might be. Um, and that's kinda difficult for them to do where they are right now. There's also some interest in, um, or ability for them to potentially help us staff a community gym space. So all of those staff are CPR, A.D.-certified, um, just given kind of the other activities that they run. And there was some conversation about, you know, if either all of their staff or part of their staff could kind of have some office presence there, they might be able to do multiple things, the community ed and rec function, but also keep an eye on the gym. While there might not be always a programmed activity going on, but maybe there's just open, you know, open gym time, open, walking track time, and having somebody who's kind of trained as, um, at least in the initial first response, um, to be able to check people in, sign them in, kinda know who's in that space, as well as just make sure everybody's staying safe. It could be a potential for the village to kinda share some of those staffing costs. Um, I think that's something beyond what senior center volunteers might be able to do or interested in doing. And again, very preliminary ideas, but, uh, we seem to, there seemed to be a lot of overlap in mission for both groups. I think we're always looking for opportunities to, to partner with the school district, um, more. And, um, we don't wanna duplicate their efforts. I think they do a really good job at what they do. And wanna make sure that anything we're kind of adding to the community is a supplement to that, not competing with them. Uh, we even got into conversations about, you know, maybe there's some, beyond just the gym, maybe there's some other space that could kind of be co-programmed. So in the evening, maybe there's a couple of, you know, an art classroom or the fitness studio, you know, yoga-type space that there could be some of those adult community classes that could take place in the evening. So just looking for other opportunities where if we're gonna build this facility, it can be used, um, to meet the needs of the community, you know, all different ages, times of day, things like that. So, um, that was probably the, again, the partnership that, um, seemed to be the best fit. And, um, you know, just kinda put a pin in that until we could bring this back to the board and see if that's something that you're interested in us continuing that conversation. Kinda where we left things with them.
Yeah, and one of the things that the survey also kinda indicated by that is there wasn't a big pushback on, is this a potential revenue? Like, is there a fee for use or monthly fee? Obviously, there's devil in all those details. But with a rec department, there's a way to, you know, maybe help offset some of the cost of running those programs or, you know, pay for them. Plus, you know, triple that essentially on the space. But yeah, I mean, honestly, I was really pleased as an outsider, like, to see the response here. I, I wish I had more to report to you because that would justify what we did, but honestly, it was pretty straightforward. And I think we, the nice thing is, you know, staff, and, and we did a really nice job setting this up to get sort of the really best, um, feedback that we could get. And I think, I hope we got it for you. So, I mean, nine hundred responses on an online survey is pretty insane in this day and age.
So I'll pick up here on the next steps, and Martin and Rachel can chime in. So this is kinda outlined in the cover memo, but, um, next steps, you know, before we move forward, we wanna make sure that you all feel that, our, you know, overarching questions, um, have been answered, we're, we're still on the right track. Did you feel that the community was sufficiently engaged? Are there other, um, things we wanna kinda check in with the community before we move forward? Secondly, is the timeline. So Martin put together kind of proposed timeline, um, for next steps, what has been done, and then what still needs to be done, and kinda where we're looking in terms of construction, um, fundraising, all of that, um, kinda the point, the point of no return. And then some of those policy decisions as well. So continuing the conversations with the school district, um, if that's of interest to the board. And then if and when a fundraising consultant should be brought on to kinda help, um, with the fundraising effort. And then lastly, um, Tri-North has kind of concluded their initial phase, um, with the, the pre-planning, the site due diligence, space needs analysis, and the community engagement. So next step is, um, entering the next phase with an owner's rep and then having that group, um, whoever that may be, kind of lead us through designing construction. So if the board feels ready to do so, we can keep that moving or happy to, um, go back and answer more questions or do some more research so you all feel like you're making an informed decision to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Initially, I, 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 do you have questions for, uh, Patrick or Lisa on what they spoke about initially? Okay, then, um, we'll go to item two, which is, I'm sorry.
Actually, well, okay, I didn't know you were gonna move on to the next one.
No.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Okay, sorry about that. I was not understanding you were gonna move on.
That's all right.
So I have a question about the walking track. Um, I was looking at the proposed, it was, that it was gonna be three lanes at like three foot wide each, at roughly, right? And I noticed that like eighty-two percent of the respondents said that that is something they would use, and that was really important to them. It was one of the highest things. And I feel like three lanes is not enough. And I don't wanna add square footage to the project, though. I've seen gyms, gymnasiums have to be tall ceiling by nature for basketball or whatever. And I'm wondering if we could install a second walking track at one level up, on the, you know, outside to, then you have six at least. And like able-bodied people, you don't wanna put in an elevator, but able-bodied people could use the upper and people below that can't do stairs could be below, maybe? I don't know, just.
If you do a cycle one, you have to have an elevator.
You have to, ugh. It's like frustrating. All right, well, then I don't know. I hate, I hate to increase square footage because that means more money. But, um, I feel like that was a really big piece of what the community said. So I feel like at busy times, I'm picturing a walking track around basketball courts and thinking, okay, you're gonna have walkers. You might have fast walkers, speed walkers, whatever, then you might have joggers and runners and three lanes trying to pass people. And if you had twenty-five people using a track, that's gonna get kinda crowded, so I'm not sure what that would look like.
Yeah, so I would say, stay tuned, because I think that's part of the next step, um, bake, right? So a good designer should take that information with you and say, okay, if we do three lanes, we can get four pickleball courts. But maybe we wanna go to a fourth or a fifth lane, and we'll take one pickleball court out. Here's where that cost differential comes in. So those are the sort of design decisions, like that next level, that really is gonna be pretty meaty. But that's really for when it, like, a full-blown designer gets on board to make sure that you got it right. Yeah, a little bit, but it's great thought process.
I would also think to any designer that's worth their salt is gonna be checking comps. I mean, there's limited similar projects in Wisconsin for sure, but other newer senior centers, okay, or community gymnasiums, there's plenty of community rec centers. What's their maybe community population or membership size, and how many lanes do they have? And what's kinda the best practice for number of people that are gonna be using that space? And then how many lanes do you really need to kinda comfortably use the track?
Okay, and then the only other thing I was gonna say is, can it be like cork material or something soft? Whatever they use on tracks to make it cushy, because I've seen ones painted on cement and, oh, gosh, those are hard on knees and bodies.
We've been exercise, having older adults exercise.
We've been exercise, having older adults exercise on concrete for forty-four years now. Um, and we're delighted to potentially have the opportunity to put in something like cork. Do not want to destroy people's dreams.
Yeah. Good. Thank you. That was it.
Uh, Tom and then Tim.
I guess the thing that actually surprised me in the numbers actually was the amount of people who suggested all what would be non-traditional senior center hours of use. Um, there was a, there's, I think the three largest categories was the, the four to seven, the seven to eleven. And then there was the five AM to nine AM. Their non-traditional hours for, for the senior center. And when you, I guess I'm pleased to hear that there's possibilities of staffing and how we could staff that. I, there's going to have to be somebody around and you're going to have to have CPR and, and other services available. That right now the senior center has that covered in their hours of operations. But, but that's going to actually create quite a bit of, uh, staffing issues and hours of people that you'd have to have there for some extended times. So, uh, I was actually surprised at the numbers of people that, that were saying they wanted, would use it from seven PM to eleven PM. Lot of, lot of interest. Well, there was a lot of interest also in the, in, in the more, I guess, non-traditional senior activities. Being supported. So you might need to think of this as more broadly than a senior center specifically.
Uh, Tim.
Well, and that's really where I wanted to push back a little bit on that. Um, you know, I saw some mention in there a footsall and I was horrified. Um, I love the game of footsall. Um, I just had a picture of a, one of those heavy footsall balls coming straight at some senior walking along with their walker. Um, I do think we have to consider the welcoming nature of the space for the seniors still. If we add other rec and community-based stuff, like some of the things you referred to, Elise, in terms of, um, the community education and recreation and potentially putting on classes and crafts and, um, educational pieces makes a lot of sense to me. When it starts to morph into rec and we've got basketball and footsall and things like that. Um, I wonder if it stops being a place that the seniors want to come to. Um, so I would, I want to just be careful. We don't go too far down that path. That's just my opinion.
Phil.
Please.
Yeah. One, I think the lens we've had on as we've gone through this planning process is that, again, a lot of details still to be worked out. Sorry, a little too close. Um, but that maybe perhaps what's kind of could be a good solution would be that there's sort of hours that are senior center only hours. So between whatever eight AM and four PM, the senior center building and the community gymnasium are a senior center use so that people feel like the activities that are happening there are designed for them. They feel comfortable in the space. They don't feel like they're going to get hit with a, you know, stray footsall ball or something like that. But then those off hours, whether they're early morning, evening, weekend, the space could be made available and maybe not the whole space, but part of that space could be made available to other groups. But yeah, I think that's one thing that we heard even back in like the comp plan, planning, planning process last year, as well as in some of the, the sessions, there's definitely a tension about, is this just a senior center? Is it morphing into more of a community center? What's the right thing? Is there a way to kind of share the space and have the best of both worlds where, you know, is it just a, is a scheduling type thing where the space is not, you know, able to be reserved by other groups outside of the senior center for certain days of the week, hours. But also the senior center may not want to always be a eight to four, Monday through Friday. I think you've had events that are on weekends, evenings that, um, that get a lot of attendance too. So I think we want to stay flexible as we consider all those operating scenarios.
Yeah. People are working longer, it, it, to older ages. And so we need to not just offer things for me to work or we miss people.
Yeah. I mean, one of the things that in our discussions I can say is both staff and, and our team have said, it's been the lens of senior center first. And that's why, you know, we made some of those decisions with single story, you know, and then maybe there's some additional. But obviously there's policy questions for you guys about that, right? Is footsall a good co-use? That's not for me to say necessarily. That's, you know, for you and a designer to kind of come to terms with and say, no, maybe medicine balls flinging around here is not the best co-use, right? Maybe it is more badminton or pickleball or whatever. But the idea is it's a really nice downtown property piece. How do we activate it, that next step so that it really feels like a whole community piece and not just this kind of walled off area?
Carly.
So it's been a while since I was on the council on aging, but when I was, one of the conversations that we had multiple times was that a lot of people who are my age, I'm sixty-six now, don't see themselves as using a senior center because it's a senior center. And my mother, who's ninety, still talks about the old people, right? So the people are just not seeing themselves as seniors and so avoiding places that, that connotes something that they don't want to feel about themselves. And so I think the more that we can make this a, a space where all members of the community feel like they have a stake in it. And maybe we do have footsall, but it's at nine o'clock at night, you know? I mean, it, it accommodates the people who would do that versus not having it and making, making the space one that, that's an intergenerational space. And I, I'm sad that the, the daycare option is not one because that's a, it's a really good thing for little kids and it's a really good thing for seniors. So, um, I, I just congratulate you all on getting such a, such a wealth of responses because that really, we know that helps everybody in making good decisions. So, uh, congratulations on that and I look forward to the next steps.
I'm waiting for number two.
Oh, sorry. Well, we've, we've kind of morphed into number two. So please go ahead. Lynn and then Amanda.
Okay. So I, first of all, I'm so excited about this idea, senior center, community center, walking, all of it. However, I'm nervous about the operating costs when we're looking at a decision in other operating issues where to add potentially staff. I think that the community ed and rec is an awesome partnership, but I'm wondering things like Saturdays. If we have something at nine, are they comfortable? What does that look like? In order for me to feel really comfortable moving to a, a step of even a design, I feel like I need to have a better handle on what that operating cost looks like. If only for staff, but also like, okay, so if we're going to have this open until nine, we have to light it, we have to heat it, we have to cool it. And I hate to be a Debbie Downer about it because I really like this, but we're looking at budgets that are so tight. And if we're adding an entirely new space that, that needs to be staffed and operated. I just think it's important that we see what those numbers might look like. And I know that's really hard when you don't necessarily know, you know, what it looks like. But I, I, that's my concern is adding a pretty big line item to a operating budget.
Phil.
Please.
Um, couple of initial responses to that. Um, thanks Lynn. I think, um, as far as the school district, community and rec, I won't speak for them and commit them to anything. I, I would, will say that we talked about generally like what hours does their staff work? A lot of their work is remote. Um, it's a lot of setting up classes and arranging rooms to reserve them in and contacting teachers and things like that. Um, and they often work outside of normal business hours anyway. Um, setting up, you know, classroom spaces in the schools for evening adult classes or whatever that might be. I'm not sure about weekends, but there was definitely an acknowledgement that they can work outside of typical business hours. And that's already kind of part of their office culture. Um, as far as operating costs, um, yeah, definitely a lot of questions there. I think one thing that was helpful to see with the gym survey is that we did ask not, you know, specific numbers about, okay, it's five dollars an hour to use the space, but you know, would you be willing to pay a membership to use this space? And if so, would you prefer to be billed, you know, per use, weekly, monthly, semester, annual pass, family pass, that kind of thing? And, um, I think, you know, we got a variety of responses there. And I think in the open ended responses, there was only a couple that said, you know, if my tax dollars are being used to use the space, I'm not going to, um, pay an additional fee to use it. But very few, I think people kind of acknowledge that this is a, you know, if I'm using the space and putting more burden on resources to ha, keep it clean and heated and similar to like the pool where you pay a use fee if you're, you know, maybe a, if you're a resident of the school district, you pay a lower rate than if you're outside of the district. Um, you know, that could be a way to, again, add some revenue, um, especially for groups that are using it. If it ends up being used for like a basketball tournament on the weekend or something. I think those types of events have a higher, you know, more resources are needed to kind of prepare for that and then clean up after that and things like that too. So just like with J C Park, I think there could be different rates depending on, you know, kind of size of organization versus you're more of an individual or, or family, you know, resident of the village or resident of the, you know, service area.
Okay.
I think if I can, just on the, the building costs, I mean, there are obviously ways to model sort of based on square footage, you know, what that might look like. Uh, but it is a bit of a chicken and egg, right? Cause your building envelope, your mechanical systems, I mean, they're all, you know, unified and, you know, is the village going to pursue sort of lead or green energy standards, like what? So until you get into design, some of that is sort of unknowable to an extent. That doesn't mean that you can't get at least ballpark figures, but really at the end of the day, it's going to be a question mark until sort of the design of those systems happens.
Okay, Amanda, then Jason, then Carly.
Okay. I should have gone before Lynn because my comment is totally unrelated. No, it's okay. I was just gonna, uh, congratulate Try North since somebody's here for them. Uh, on the award that they got, uh, last week in Pewaki, the top ten, or top, top fifty projects uh, were honored in Wisconsin. Um, and they gave out some really nice awards. I went to the, the dinner there and, um, the Oregon Public Library was one of them that was honored. So Try North got an award and the Public Library got an award. So.
It's not our award. I mean, we just did the work and submitted it.
Well, I'm just saying, you're, you're here. So you get the thanks. That was my comment. So thanks.
Okay. Uh, Jason.
All right. Um, I, I want to speak to, and, and this will dovetail back to you, Lynn. Um, but first of all, in terms of a fundraising consultant, if we determine that we're going to do that, I would encourage the board to hire, uh, uh, move that process maybe up a little bit. Um, the sooner that we can get someone on board working on fundraising, even if we're just organizing while the design is happening. Um, having worked on the library steering committee with the fundraising and working with, uh, fundraising as a job, the, the, the more time you have for organization and preparation, the more successful a campaign will be. And just these numbers right here tell me from the study that, uh, fun, uh, fundraising should be, it's never simple, but it should be easier than other asks. Um, likewise, um, this makes me think that there could be a potential for planned gifts that could go to, um, benefit ongoing operations, um, offset ongoing operations of the senior center. Um, and, and not just the building. So, um, I don't know regulations with villages and senior centers with endowments and such. But that is something that I, we, we might want to look into as well. And that would help, um, with the funding, uh, above and beyond, um, tax dollars, which we know are always tight.
Carly.
I have a question, I think, for you, Patrick. Uh, you mentioned that, that, um, use for basketball and other kinds of things can sometimes generate revenue. And I know I participated in softball and basketball and soccer through M S C R. And as a non-resident playing in a league that was in La Follette High School or East High School, depending on where my team played or whatever field, um, there, there was, you know, often a pretty hefty fee for some, some of those, not that we want to have hefty fees necessarily, but is there any study of, or is there something for down the line of, of actually these kinds of things being a source of revenue versus, um, um, a drain on revenue?
Yeah. So I, I serve on the Madison Area Sports Commission as well. So we've gone through this a couple of times and the most recent time specifically for looking at, um, potential like multi-use rec, like humongous rec centers, sort of, uh, around the line energy center. The, the place where you really start to make like serious revenue, it's eight basketball courts or roughly that size of, um, rec facility. You can obviously offset costs with singular courts and, and a couple of courts, but really the real tournament money, which is where you start to really see that kind of come in, that, that's that sort of tipping point.
So maybe re, I should rephrase, is there a break even? Like if we're not looking to, to make revenue off of it, but at least not have it, have it be, um, a suck on the budget?
Yeah. And I think it depends on, you know, your facility costs and your square footage and everything. So that's a little bit harder to answer just sort of in the ethereal. But I mean, when you look at sort of the cost of that additional space, you could certainly do a calculation for like, you know, we know we have to have one staff person on site and this is the amortization that we want to charge for the, you know, uh, capital expense of the facility. So you can show a recapture pretty easily once we kind of know what the cost of that space is. And you could even do like, okay, if it's a local, you could do it at seventy percent of that number. Or if you're an out of Oregon, you know, group, you pay a hundred or a hundred and ten percent of what we kind of pegged that to. So there are a lot of options and I hate to sort of throw it back at you, but those are really on the policy side as opposed to the best practice side. But there are resources out there to help you get to that. Um, and I would encourage the Madison Area Sports Commission is a great resource for that sort of thinking.
Thank you.
Lynn.
So off of Carleen's idea here and kind of going what you said, Elise. So if we're talking about building something that automatically from the get-go is going to have a fee structure, is, was that really asked? You, you had mentioned that there were some responses. I'm wondering if that really changes the way that's like, and this is nothing against community ed and rec. I think they do a fantastic job, but they're, they have fees already for every single class. And I think it does prohibit lots of families from being able to participate in those. And so if we're from the very beginning, from day one, opening doors, going to ask for a fee, do we feel like everyone who took the community survey and gave us that feedback had that in mind? Yes? Rachel, you're nodding. Yes?
Well, I believe the question was, um, the fee to use the building, would you prefer that it be charged annually, semester, you know, monthly? So I think there was built in the assumption that you're going to be paying for this opportunity. And I think there were like two people who in the comments section said, well, if my tax dollars are supporting this, I don't know why I have to pay a membership fee too.
Right. I just didn't know that was phrased. So if, if it was the assumption that there would be a fee, that's helpful.
Yeah. So the question was a membership fee for the gymnasium or walking track, how would you prefer the fee or membership to be structured?
Okay.
It was the fourth question. So it wasn't the first question, but it was fairly early on in the survey.
Amanda's next.
I just, I'm, I've just based on what Lynn said real quick. I think the school district has some programs in place to help families who can't afford those. So just an FYI check with them.
Absolutely. For community ed and rec, I'm just saying like for a village use, I want to be careful not to like immediately just.
That leads me to the next point is to, are we going to have maybe tiers like, you know, reduced fees for? Yeah, or not, uh, sliding scale gets interesting because it's kind of how are you going to check that, right? I mean, i- if we had a price for, for seniors and veterans and students or something that was lower than everybody else. So I don't just, I'm throwing out ideas here. It does, I'm not married to any of this, but just like to have tiered, uh, just to, to make it more affordable for everybody. Something to think about.
Okay.
Phil.
Oh, sorry.
Something else unrelated to what we've been discussing, but just to let you all know too, um, we have the benefit of being post-library process and learning a lot of lessons from that too. Um, as well as being, uh, on the kind of middle to tail end of a lot of federal money and grants and kind of more information coming out about those all the time too. So, um, we are trying to do our best to keep up to speed with all the different grants that are available. A lot of stuff, um, we think if we set ourselves up well, will be, um, a really great candidate for some of the, um, Inflation Reduction Act, like clean energy, um, funds, again, that's. Um, Inflation Reduction Act, like clean energy, um, funds, again, that's more capital expense versus operational potentially. But also leads into operational costs if you have, um, you know, clean energy and more, um. More of that grid offset. So definitely looking at that. There's also more on like the, the social services senior side. I think there's a lot of. Different groups, whether it's A R P, other foundations that are trying to combat, you know, loneliness or fall prevention or. Um, providing access to telehealth, um, and making sure that people have spaces they can go and meet with their doctors. Um, so I think there's a lot of different avenues and angles that hopefully we can tap a lot of different sources of funding and, um, trying to. Stay ahead of that. So as we, if we move into design, we can keep those funding opportunities in mind.
Okay, so, uh, and thank you, Patrick, and Lisa. What's before us then is basically, uh. Do, are we going to approve the timeline that's in front of us and, uh. Which includes hiring an owner's rep? Do we want to to, uh, garner more information before we do that? Uh, I'm looking for, uh. Some direction. Uh, Carleen.
I think the sooner we hire an owner's rep, the better. We learned that with the library. We don't wanna have those mistakes repeated.
Okay, um. Uh, Jason.
I will move that we continue forward with the timeline as presented and hiring an owner's rep. With period there.
Can I ask you something? Because you suggested before that this hiring of a fundraising consultant be moved up. Did you wanna?
I, I am.
This timeline.
Right, I I am guessing that this is, this is an estimated timeline, so so winter twenty twenty-five is actually winter twenty twenty-four as well. So it, it, I I'm assuming it's somewhat flexible.
The only reason why I had it pushed out a little bit was, um, one of the conversations that we've had with Jennifer Way was. It's hard to fundraise for something when you don't have like an image or something to sell.
Correct.
And so, uh, we, we put it a little farther after we got into design a little bit so that. We could bring him on and have, give them something to work out to the world with.
Right.
But we could get him on earlier and just start having conversations too.
Right, and or look for the fundraising person, so they're on board when we start.
Okay, so, uh, we had a motion from, uh, Jason and Carleen chimed in. Was that a second, Carleen?
Yeah, that can be a second. I just wanted to check with him about the timeline.
All right. Okay, so, uh, uh, sounds like we're on board, uh, further discussion. Amanda.
So we're not talking about the fundraising consultant yet. We're gonna table that for now and.
It says tentative, and so it sounds like depending on how the, the next steps in design go.
We can do that later.
Yeah, well.
Bring it back later.
All right, okay.
Yeah.
That's what I, that's what I'm understanding.
Jeff, do you wanna pull up the timeline? I think, I don't know if it, is it in the packet?
One ninety-two?
There was a lot in there. Our attachments, my attachments.
Up there is which one?
Yeah.
Did you have something else, Elise, or?
Um, so moving forward, I guess in the policy decisions, we talked about the fundraising rep. Uh, the school district conversation. Again, that timeline is also kinda squishy too, but. Is that of interest to the board to at least kinda leave that door open and explore further?
It is to me, yes.
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 Do you want, do you want that as part of the motion?
Let's, let's have an amendment, yes.
Okay. So I, I, I moved to amend, k- k- is that right? Moved to amend my emotion to include continued. Conversations with community partners, including the school district.
And someone's second. Second. Other elements that you might wanna, we wanna consider.
Martin, you good?
No, I, I mean, I, I think the only thing I would say is, we'll, we'll talk about the fundraising stuff internally and maybe we'll talk about. We'll have that conversation sooner than what's on the schedule.
A- and obviously I'm willing to help in any way, shape or form on a volunteer basis.
Okay, first of all. First of all, on the amendment, all, um, all those in favor indicate saying aye?
Aye.
Further discussion on the main motion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you. It has been our pleasure. You've had a team of mostly Oregon or Oregon-adjacent people working on this project, so it has been very exciting for all of us. Thank you so much.
Great, thanks for coming.
Thanks again. Um, item eight B, informational presentation from Village Financial Advisor Ellers. Regarding referendums exceeding proper tax levy limits and discussion regarding possible future referendum. Let's tell you who are.
Yeah.
Get started. Speaking of the mics, it's always a.
Sounds, sounds good. Um, Brian Raymer, uh, with Ellers, Senior Municipal Advisor, I also have.
Uh, my name is Kayla Thorpe. I'm a senior, um, financial specialist at Ellers.
So, um, we gave a presentation to, um, the. A Dane County group of elected officials, uh, kinda speaking to, uh, levy limit referendums. And, uh, village staff had reached out to ask if we could give a similar presentation to your group. Uh, so that's kind of what you have in front of you tonight. I don't know if there's any other stage setting beyond that that you. No, I think that's. Everybody knows why we're here, I think. Okay, so, uh, with that, we can go to the first one. We're gonna kind of talk about. Why there are constraints and why communities are going to municipal referendum. Um, we're gonna talk about kind of the prep and that's, that's more resource information. We're not gonna take a lot of time. Um, with that, but we'd like to take a little bit more time with some of the case studies. Um, one that I've personally walked through and one that Kayla has personally walked through. And then certainly we'll leave room for any Q and A, um, at the end. So. Generally, a lot of local governments are having issues wherein. They have expenditures rising faster than their levy limit form, formula or allowable levy. Um, I'm sure this has been the crux of many, uh, discussions through our financial management planning process. Uh, primarily Dave from our office is presenting that material. Um, but. Not only that, as communities grow, you have to add services, um, you'll have to add staffing. Um, and not, that doesn't, that net new construction doesn't always account for, uh, inflationary, uh, pressures. So what we've generally seen is that net new construction on the aggregate doesn't meet. Um, what typical inflation that communities are experiencing. So, um, a lot of it is protective services. Obviously, we just had Act twelve, so hopefully a little bit of extra shared revenue, but is it enough? You know, all of these kind of swirling questions around, uh, budgets. So. Still seeing a lot of communities interested in this topic. Anything you'd like to add to that?
No, uh, we're just. Levy limits aren't going anywhere. We're obviously well aware of that and that those pressures will continue to happen. And net new construction and impact fees and those alternate revenue sources that we've kind of exploited to date. Especially in a growing community, can't keep up with the pressures on staff. Um, and really those high demand staff of public safety. Um, that's where, at least in my experience with the communities I've worked with, is the large driver behind levy limit referendums. Just because those costs are far outpacing any type of revenue scheme you can develop on an annual basis.
So we can go to the next slide, uh, which is just a fun little transition of preparing for a referendum. Gets everybody excited for the graphs, okay? Numbers aren't always exciting, but, uh, a lot of people are thinking. Well, we need it. I don't hear about this too often, uh, you know, what other, what have other communities done and. One of the items that we've noted from the Department of Revenue's, uh, information is there are a lot more of them, uh, going on. Um, you'll generally see kind of a little dip, maybe after you've gotten a piece of legislation for extra revenue. You know, it's hard to sell, uh, levy limit referendum when you just got more, you know, state aid. Uh, but generally that over time, it'll come back up. So this, this chart just graphically represents either one-time or ongoing. Levy limit referendums that have been passed. That doesn't account for the ones that didn't pass. That is, uh, a little bit harder to track. I'm not aware of any, uh, general source data outside of the news articles at the time that. Uh, an election, uh, would happen and somebody having to actually pencil that down, but the past referendums, you can kind of see a general trend here over time. The next slide just identifies the dollar amount in terms of referendums passed. There's a good little pinky finger here. I don't know if we wanna link that to Dr. Evil or anything yet, but if you're following there, obviously. The, uh, the numbers are increasing. I think, uh, part of that, you know, we have seen some communities. Um, ask for referendums for single u- single purpose use, um, for one time, so they're saying we don't wanna go take out. Like a one-year note to cover our levy needs. We're gonna ask the community, um, pretty rare, but sometimes that can skew some of these. But in general, there is a, uh, a trend upward in terms of the amount of dollars, uh, asked for, so. Some of the next two slides are, I think, more reference material, but we liked to kind of provide that to understand that. This doesn't happen in a vacuum or in a short amount of time. Um, there is certainly no difference in the presentation that you just had. Kind of a reason to engage the public, um, and involve them. Um, so you can start to kind of lay the groundwork for why it's needed, so we understand what we're voting on. Um, so outside of that, just understanding what the process would be in terms of actually putting that on the ballot. So we, we provide a couple of, you know, recommendations here just for preparing for a referendum, but. You know, you can go so far as to use a public relations firm, um, to help with some of those communications and things like that. Um, generally, we're kind of involved in the prove that we need it, you know, cr- crunch the numbers, um, but we're not. Generally, a public relations firm, but we have communities that have certainly used those, but you wanna outline a very. Uh, good timeline, um, based off of need as well, basically. When are those new expenses hitting? So, any other items?
And I'll just say that some of these timelines are laid out in state statute as to some drop dead lines. Um, I have been, happened to have the opportunity to work with your neighbors in Fitchburg on their levy limit referendum discussions. And really coming down to the deadline of choosing the election for what that is on and then walking yourself back to the timeline on that. To meet your statutory requirements, um, because it does, um, require a resolution approval by this governing body. Um, in time to be sent to the county clerk within the X number of days, depending on whatever election you choose. Um, to make sure that that question is framed properly. Um, and that's really kind of where we help determine what those dollar amount figures are. Um, if obviously you've all have voted in elections and seen some of those school district referendums, those are statutory required language. That you don't have the option to change that. You only get to change the dollar amount and the percentage. Um, there is, that is not up for. Um, editing by the governing body. It is required by, um, state statute, but really figuring out what that dollar amount is. And depending on which election you choose, um, to move forward with, it's either an estimate or an actual. Um, anything after August is actual, because the state will release your cer- new certified values on August fifteenth. Um, anything before then is an estimate based off of prior year. So just, there's different considerations to take into play when you're talking about. Timing, um, and what the figures are going to be. Um, and so that's kind of what we're do- doing in Fitchburg right now. Fitchburg did a massive public information gathering process before, um, kind of we at Ellers got involved. And so, so now we're merging the two of the public feedback on picking a dollar amount. And then forming the question and and the analysis of what impact that is on the individual taxpayer.
Um, this slide is, uh, generally geared towards that, th- those wins that Kayla was speaking to. In terms of what elections you can, uh, put this on, um, and that you need to kind of pass that resolution. Um, again, you know, the other item that I would add to what Kayla, Kayla, Kayla clearly laid out. Putting two words together, um, is it Monday? Um, that you can do a one-time or an ongoing or a limited time, um, in truth, there should be kind of a third option there. You can do it for a certain amount of years or just one time or ongoing. If you're doing it for something that's recurring expenditures like salaries or some other service that you would plan to continue to propose. Obviously, ongoing is your option there. If you do limited time, we probably have a future problem built in to the whole nature of what we're asking for. That can be true as well for the dollar amount that you choose. Um, we do have communities that say. You know, and speaking and kind of getting further down the road, this is the dollar amount we need, um. Because we feel that we know what our future expenditures will be. We don't know that we'll get the full amount. And maybe we have to back off on that by a certain amount, just based off of what the levy or the tax impact would be as a result of what that dollar amount is. So, again, it's gonna be kind of fine-tooth combing this as you go. Um, we kinda spoke to this ballot, uh, language, um, but again, you have to follow statute. And identify the purpose for the increase. And, um, I think that's some of the fun that you've been going through in, uh, Fitchburg is. You wanna be pretty explicit, however, you wanna get to the point, um, as well. So for example, we, um, when we were speaking to the Dane County group and presenting this, a lot of the referendums that we'll see. Um, have better results is, uh, generally for, you know, public safety purposes. Um, obviously, the school referendums, uh, usually have good results as well. Um, we've seen some. You know, fail that are to general purpose, right? We need it for everything without saying everything. Um, but just kind of to build the general fund or, you know, whatever language, um, you'll kind of see float out there. So. Being specific for it, um, and identifying kind of what you're using it for within that community. Survey process, I think, can be very helpful and we'll speak to some explicit examples of that, so. For the first one, I'll take this and then I'll let you take yours, obviously. Um, so, uh, this was working with Cambridge. Um, not too far from here, uh, they were experiencing some increased costs from their shared fire. District in which, um, basically the shared fire district requests were raising larger than the actual allowable levy increase. So instead of getting something, they were getting nothing because that district's expenses were increasing too much. So. They ended up having to make budget cuts every year, streamline positions, you know, figure out ways that they can navigate within the budget. Um, I'll just point your eyes to the kind of bottom right of this, um.
That part?
Yep, yep, that's perfect. So the way that, um, you'll ultimately look at this and and how it's calculated. As Kayla identified, if you're doing this in an election where you don't have the next net new construction number available. They say you need to actually calculate it off of the last net new construction number. So. Can be hard to, uh, pinpoint in terms of exact needs if you know, well, we've had so many X house builds this year, our net new construction should be higher. Um, so you, you do have to do some, uh, acute math and kind of planning for that effort. But, um, basically this slide would show that we, their allowable levy wasn't increasing enough, hence the bottom line went. And this last number kind of shown, they were under by about nine thousand dollars, but if that were to continue, right, we would have this continual problem. So then they said, give us every levy limit, um, referendum number fifty thousand to a hundred fifty thousand. We think we need about a hundred thousand, but we wanna see the tax impact eventually landed on ninety-five thousand as highlighted in blue here. Um, wherein they said that'll, that'll give us what we need for, for now. We understand that we were kind of hoping for a hundred fifty thousand. As the high end, but it was just too much of a tax impact and we kind of went through the whole process. Of, uh, identifying those, sending out a mailer, et cetera. I will say. I will say they did do this with about three months left before the budget was passed. So this was the shotgun wedding and it did pass by one vote. So just kind of understanding that they got it done. But, you know, we, a limited timeframe in terms of when they were looking to get this going. So if we go to the next slide. We kind of walked through some of these items. But eventually the crux was we just wanted to find kind of, and I would call this the simple and shotgun approach. And I said that on purpose is when they asked, can you help us with this? I said, we're we're too late, you know, is there a consideration of any other cuts we can make? And they said, we just, no, we're at our limit. We got to ask for something. So I will say they did a great job of getting all the information and everything ready. But again, you can see by one vote, obviously, that was some contention, so.
What was their timeframe in developing this?
What's that?
What was the timeframe from when they began?
Three months.
Three months.
Yep. So a much better example.
Prior to joining Ellers last year, I had the pleasure of serving as the village administrator and the village butler for 10 years. And so coming into the village of Butler, a much different size, scope and demographic probably as your village, but it was a first ring outer suburb of the city of Milwaukee. Completely built out 100%, 50% residential, 50% manufacturing, 0.1 square miles or 0.7 per square miles with 1,800 residents, but a daytime population of 10,000. Major industries in the village butler. We also had the fun task of bordering one of the most underprivileged, high crime and socio economically diverse areas of the city of Milwaukee. And so that created a large stressor on our public safety. When I started in the village of Butler in 2015, 14, 13, 14, we had five sworn officers and a working chief. That first year, we added one new police officer patrol officer using some creative levy limit application math, but knew that we were at a crux in the next handful of years. Whether that was adding additional police staff and going the referendum route or outsourcing our police services to the county. We learned very quickly that outsourcing police services was not a tolerable ask of our community and was not going to go well for the governing body at the next election cycle. And so through the years, we really took time to kind of impact what is our net new construction, which was very low. What is our continued and ongoing operating costs outside of public safety? So that we could get a handle on what are we spending? Therefore, what can we shift and dedicate to public safety to kind of hold off a referendum as much as possible? Because we were also a very blue collar community. The average house value in the village butler is $150,000 and the median income was about $70,000. And so we were always very mindful of what the property tax ask was for our citizens. The crux came to head in 2022. As you'll see in some of the further slides, crime rates in the village butler skyrocketed. And what's important to note about this is this is not organic crime. This is pass through crime. This was crime not created by our citizens, not even happening in our community. It was a lot of chases. It was a lot of mutual aid calls. It was a lot of things happening, being brought into our community by some of the people that surrounded us. So we struggled with how do we communicate this to our residents is that we need you to pay for more police officers for crime that you're not committing or for for assistance that you're not needing. And we learned that there was unwavering support for our police department, for our local police department. And our residents kind of took the philosophy as we don't care what it costs, just send us a bill. Well, that does, that's not how levy limits work and that's not how that's that's not how the game is played. And so we took probably a year. And this was not directly correlated to the referendum. But I knew very early on that if our residents didn't understand levy limits, they weren't going to understand why we couldn't just increase their taxes to pay for these new police officers. And so I started studying, setting the stage through the annual budget process, through my messages, through the budgeting process in the tax bills and basically every water bill. Every time we talked about money was talking about what levy limits are, the constraints that we're put under and why that we are reaching ahead to where we can no longer fund the services to the levels demanded by our residents. Alternatively, we also discussed with residents, if we aren't going to go to a referendum, what services are you willing to cut to continue to fund public safety? And we discussed things like parking wreck and brush pickup and DPW services. And there was obviously no tolerance for that as well. So we knew the only option that we had moving forward was a referendum. We were also cognizant of our not overextending our tax base and not overextending our department. So we determined and modeled out that one full time police officer would really get us through the next handful of years until maybe the crime evens out, maybe the demand on services evens out, or maybe there's change in levy limit laws. I took the philosophy of modeling it out for a number of years. So we weren't asking for what the actual costs were day one hiring that officer, but where were those impacts going to be? And I did a five year model and kind of took an average of cost over the five years and that was our ask. So I think we asked for $168,000. But we really didn't talk about the dollar amount much to the community. We talked about the why. We talked about the graphs of the increased calls for services and how many overtime shifts we were taxing our community and our officers with. And the amount of property crime and the amount of kind of that broken window philosophy is we're letting things kind of go by the wayside so we can dedicate resources to those higher drain calls. But if we had more staff, we could take a more holistic approach to preserving and protecting our community. And that really resonated with our residents. And so we did a number of mailers, as you will see here. Not, obviously, as the village, you can't take position, you just take the information way. And just a ton of education and a ton of outreach. And we educated each police officer, each DPW person, because they're the first line of people are going to flag you down on the street and say, hey, what's this all about? And so we were really diligent to not expose our weaknesses, obviously, but communicate and impact the why and the how and what that means. And boiled it down to like a per week and a per day cost and a per month cost. Because when people say you're going to get a 10% increase in your property taxes, that's scary. But when you can boil it down to, well, it's a dollar per week, that's a more manageable. That that's a that's a quick trip, whatever it is. So that and and a lot, well, maybe not anymore, another inflation is what it is. But especially with the communities, I'm working with a number of communities right now on levy limit referendums. That that is my kind of tell is boil it down into manageable bytes of information so people can understand what their actual impact on their bill is going to be. And then we held two town hall, public town hall meetings throughout this process. We started really hitting the ground in probably late November, early December because we were had our budget adopted and went to referendum in April. And it passed with 85% of the vote. There was, we had no reservation, no question, nothing going into election day that this referendum was not going to pass. Because we were honest with our community, we were open and transparent, and we put in the time and the effort to not just educate them on what they're going to get with this money, but what a levy limit problem creates and that, and that this isn't the N L B L solution. This is a ongoing $168,000 a year. But obviously, in 15 years, it's going to cost more than that to employ a police officer or employ a village administrator or employ any of your employees. And so it's really understanding and just being open, honest, transparent. And I think that's what resonated with our voters and got the the results that we had in our small referendum. One thing I'll also say is we really tapped into the resources of our neighboring school districts. In my opinion, no scientific data around it, school districts are the best at getting the referendums passed. The way they can model and communicate with people and their their student body and the parents of what their needs are is something that local government can actually take a tone from and how to boil that down into manageable things. Because we were part of the Sussex Hamilton School District, which in four years did about $150 million worth of referendums, passed every one of them. And so if the same taxpayers can pay for $150 million in referendums in four years, I think 168 should be manageable, but for some reasons, local governments struggle with the how and the why. And so that's something that you can pay attention to is kind of taking those communication efforts. And that's really where these mailers came from, was getting something in front of your voters that they can understand that's easily digestible, that you don't need a college degree, you don't need a master's degree to kind of figure out what the impact on you is going to be. Kind of my spiel. So these are just more, it's just kind of a vote, the days and times that the referend or that the ball, polling locations was over. We never once said you should support it, you shouldn't support it, nothing. We left that kind of up to the the digestion of the community. But like I said, overwhelming support for that. And then I was happy that we were able to hire that ninth officer before I left and the department's fully staffed.
Thank you. Questions for our guest, Tim?
Yeah, you said something, started by obviously, and it wasn't obvious to me at least. Obviously, you can't take a position. Could you expand on what you meant by that?
So as a governing body and as a village government, you can't say vote yes to this referendum. You should just say vote or you have to just say vote. Your employees can't say vote yes to the referendum, vote no to the ref, like that whole position. Can't take a position in support or opposition publicly on any literature, documents, anything in your role as a governing body and as staff. Yeah, you'll get, probably get a big hand slap because it is challenging. It is, but it then it it shifts the focus from more of a political conversation to a numbers conversation, to a need and to a want and kind of takes off the I don't support X policy. Well, that's not the policy. This is the implementation of a decision that was made however many years ago or that the governing body as a whole made, and this is why we need this money. Do with it as you may be.
Lynn's next.
So my question is sort of for both of you because both of your examples are around public safety. In Kayla, in your situation, because the the issues are coming from outside of your control, outside of your community, you're dealing with a community that can kind of center around that together. But I'm wondering what kind of pressure this puts on public safety when they're sort of in the bullseye of these conversations? And how do we, I mean, you're not experts in this. So I guess just out of your experiences, how do we protect that? Because what I'm most nervous about is if we pinpoint public safety very specifically, we start to put a burden onto our public safety officers to prove that this is necessary and that that's not where we're interested in going at all.
No, and we are very cognizant of that. And I will say we had the advantage or disadvantage, the city of Milwaukee was in a completely different county, even though we shared a border. So it's not like we could even rely on those shared services of that other county to help supplement us. We were in a completely different county. We're in Waukesha County versus Milwaukee County. And there's a couple of things regarding public safety is one, I think anybody can look at any city or county or government budget across the state of Wisconsin and easily pinpoint that public safety is the most expensive service that we provide. And rightfully so for people that lay are willing to lay down their lives every day for us. And there's repercussions of that is that other departments either need to get slimmer or the community needs to respond through things like referendums. And so we really didn't put public safety in the crosshairs. And in my experience with other administrators in my former life that I've worked with, people resonate with public safety more than administration, let's say.
Former administrator.
Clearly, after 15 years of government, I'd call to quits. But it's it's high visibility. It's something they understand. It's something they see every single day. And when they need that service, they want that service there. And so that's easy to communicate. But the the other side of that is it's also the most expensive service and is going to continue to be the drain on, or the repercussions of levy limits are is that it stresses the ability of taxpayers to pay for continuing levels of public safety and increasing levels of public safety, especially for growing communities. Your your net new construction is never going to pay for it. Impact fees are never going to pay for it. We are doing a number of impact fee analysis for communities who are trying to pay for new firefighters and new police officers with impact fees, and the math just doesn't work. It's not going to work. So it really is the only option. It's how you frame and phrase those words in those conversations that don't blame a department or a person, but explain why. And that's really crafting messages. We did not use a PR firm. We did everything internally. But many communities who are doing large referendums now are working with PR firms to kind of craft that message because we're not experts. Martin and I in our our former life of how, what words resonate better than others? Because that's a science as well. And so relying on those resources that are available to you, that makes this process easier to communicate the actual facts versus it getting muddied along the way and being a pinpoint blame then.
Great, thank you.
The other thing I would add is you do have to say what it's for. So for example, if you're generally where the services are needed, and Kayla's is a good example, like they were adding a police officer for X reason, that's going to increase the budget in which their net new construction couldn't fund. So I think that's a pretty linear transition instead of just saying, well, it's public safety because we feel like that'll pass. No, no, we're following the statutory process and what's causing this is what you're voting on, right? So you you do have to remember that you have to use it for what what's needed understandably, right? There's different parts of the budget that are always increasing. But if you're explicit in the reason there that you're adding an officer, right? You kind of can't hide from that within the statutory requirements. So I don't think it puts, in my mind, as long as that's explained, I don't think that puts like a negative, you know, pressure on them. It's just the understanding that we are hiring another officer and and that's the money that we're asking for.
And I and I think I can attest to this and something that you've probably seen a lot in Fitchburg. They haven't decided the dollar amount nor what the question will be. But they were just presented the results of their community survey on a number of different asks. And the one that got garnered the most response to hypothetically passing, if it was on a ballot, was adding 17 and a half new positions, only eight of which were public safety. But the eight public safety positions were supported in every variation of question they asked the community. It was the down list that got a little muddied. And so I think if you look at the data, there's a Wisconsin Policy Forum study on referendums focused on school district, but there's a minor information on the municipal, yeah. It's always minor information, but public safety referendums across the state overwhelmingly pass.
Okay, anybody else? Amanda?
I was just going to talk about selling the brownie. Well, this is, she knows about this. I'm thinking when we, if we are doing this, you know, like think about when you're going to the store, yours cake mix, right? They're they're trying to sell you cake mix, but they're not selling you cake mix. They have a picture of a moist delicious brownie on the cover or whatever, and that's what they're selling you. They're saying, this is what we're giving you, this this end result. And that's how we have to think of it. They're not giving you eggs and milk and all the ingredients. They're giving you the finished product. That's what they're selling and that is how we should be thinking about this. You know, the bits and pieces, you know, like they can know what's in it, but like end result. Here's here's the big picture kind of thing.
Carly?
Thanks for that, Amanda. And I'll add to that. I think.
Um, I think really explaining the levy limits, which Martin started doing in a piece earlier. In the in the Oregon Observer, the the why we have to do this. And I wanna push back on something both of you said, that we have to live with the le- levy limits. Yeah, for this time we do, but we need to not stop rattling the cage of the legislature. To say this system is broken, we need to fix it. Look, look at this graph of all of the municipalities that have had to go to referendum. To get their basic services covered. And I'll just put in here as well, the and and chief, if you can help me with the the terminology. That went into the shared revenue bill about all the paperwork that you had to fill out, something of effort.
Maintenance of it.
Maintenance. I I was gonna say margin, but uh that's like margin of error, margin of effort. That's how much you win by. Um, but the maintenance of effort, right? And they did not put any extra funds in there to help you with all that reporting or all those other kinds of things. So. You can probably tell that I'm really frustrated with the legislature because they're putting us in this position across the state. And also school districts, and we need to be pushing on them again and again, always while we fix our problem.
And you will get those questions. We got those questions. Um, and our response from staff and from the governing body was please call your state legislators. And let them know that this is a real problem. Um, because it wasn't more of, it was understanding what the levy limit was, but it was more of just send us a bill. Just put it on the tax bill, like whatever it costs, do it. Um, and that's where that levy limit conversation came into play. But I our standard response was call your state legislators and please let them know. Um, just so uh you don't kind of weed into that fray of um taking a position one way or another. But also kind of isolates your staff from having to play the game of. Let's put more pressure on people, um, because that's not kind of the role that they need to be put in as well. Or want to be put in. In my case, I didn't want that.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Brian and Kayla.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it's the twenty twenty five draft budget direction. Number one, discussion.
I could talk a little bit. And I broke this these two items up, the budget and the the referendum conversation. So I think we can talk about them intertwined or take one up or not take one up. But um, so this uh for C for the draft budget direction, just based on the last couple of conversations. And just isolating the twenty five budget specifically, obviously, we're not gonna have a referendum, I don't think, although we could try in November. Um, you can tell me otherwise, but um if we do not have a referendum, obviously, we're gonna go into twenty five budget. With some of the discussion that we've had regarding the projections that um have been presented. Uh, so I think uh, you know, from my perspective, and I think what would be helpful for staff and departments. Is having some direction on how those budgets, those draft budgets need to come together. So that we can build a budget that um we can present that meets your expectations. Um, and so what I've done here is uh put a resolution together that identifies uh the different items. That I think we need to uh be forward with and be transparent with. In terms of how departments and other entities need to put their their drafts together for their budget. Um, and I would say overall, uh, it's a pretty, I think we used the word constrained last time. Um, it's basically trying to constrain everything to status quo and maintaining um what we're doing right now. Uh, including the lieutenant's position that was added. Um, and then doing pretty much sort of the bare bare minimum of um our policies for compensation and things like that. Um, and then whatever is um needed, if there's a gap, would be filled with general fund reserve. Which was um the point of discussion we had last week. And I I'll say too, our our financial management policies indicate that we should have a resolution for a plan. If we're going to start using general fund reserves, so we should start documenting that this is happening. This is what we're doing for this budget, uh, and then beyond that, we'll we'll have to keep having that conversation.
Anyone? Jason?
Uh, Martin, uh, if you could help me, um, number seven has a uh, it's about the uh fire EMS. Um. If uh within a factor of a the Consumer Price Index plus two percent, that that that's a lot more jargon than I understand. Can you you break that down a little bit, please?
So there, one of the very few um levy limit exceptions that exists in statute. Is this exception relating to joint fire and EMS districts. And if a joint firing EMS district, uh, their total charges assessed back to the municipalities. That are part of the district stays within a factor of the CPI plus two percent, meaning it doesn't go over that. You can actually, the the communities can actually increase their tax levy by that amount of new charge. So basically, it's kind of like a an expenditure restraint. Um, uh, program for joint firing EMS districts. Or the the state is basically saying, you can go up to this amount for this service. But if you go over, you don't get the levy limit exception. But if you stay under, you can actually raise your levy even above and beyond your your new construction levy. So if um the Oregon Fire EMS district stayed within that, and let's say the total SSS charges were a hundred thousand more. We could, for us, we could add a hundred thousand onto our levy. So ta- we we're saying taxes will go up because we're gonna add a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand on. But we can take that exception and increase our taxes that way.
Thank you. And and just uh just would add, Martin and I talked about this at length. Um, because we're adding it to our levy, obviously, that preserves cash. Otherwise, it would come out of our net of construction or anything else like that. Okay?
Basically wipes the the added cost for the firing EMS district for the the next budget year off the plate, basically. Cause we can get, we can ask for, we can get more tax revenue for that purpose specifically.
Thank you. Anybody else? Amanda.
Um, number nine. Uh, when you talk about discretionary external budget requests, is that? Like optional stuff as opposed to necessary equipment or something like that? Uh, I I'm my my only concern is OCA media, you know, they use a lot of pretty expensive equipment. And we try very hard to budget and to have some reserves to cover those. But you know, if a five thousand dollar camera breaks and their bu- whole budget is only a hundred and thirty thousand, I just, I worry that. You know, if we're just like, we're not even gonna consider it, does that fall under the discretionary request or?
I think so. I think if it's not a mandatory, if we're not contractually obligated to do it, then it's discretionary. And I would say an external request from the fire district, there's an element of mandatory to that because we're contractually obligated to it. Same with senior center or whatever. Um, you know, there might be a little wiggle room in there since we're on the governing body of the the fire district. But um, I would say anything else that we're not obligated or contractually obligated to do. I think we need to send a message to those individuals to start preparing that there's not going to be anything extra potentially here. Because it's not fair to them if they come with something a couple of months down the line and we haven't informed them of that.
Carly.
I think one of the things in preparing for a referendum for next year is to make public the things that are happening to constrain the budget. Um, so that people understand that we're already doing everything that we can to keep from. Uh, you know, because we don't have enough in our budget to cover what what what. To cover the budget, we have to cut the budget and that's what this means. And one of the things that that is necessary but disappointing. Is that it feels like it's falling on staff again. And fortunately, we had the compensation study and people got something before this had to happen. Um, but it it just, you know, those are the 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 first several things have to do with staff. And um, that's, we need to call your legislator. Fix, fix the shared revenue limit.
Lynn.
I just wanna make a comment. I'm gonna sound like a broken record. But I know that this memo is drafted in order to talk about the situation we're in for twenty twenty five. And this lieutenant position is an important decision that we made. It is in conjunction with an increased cost of everything. I think that that statement needs to get added as often as we possibly can. That this situation that we're in is not simply due to one position. I think it's difficult to put the blame on one position and that the community needs to understand that. This is, it was an eventual, because things cost more, we were gonna be here. Obviously, decisions that we made are real and that's important. But I just wanna make a point that there are multiple factors that have created this situation.
Uh, Carly.
So I agree that the costs of everything are going up. This is not new with recent inflationary pressures. This really is shared revenue formulas are broken. They haven't been fixed since two thousand and five. We had a little bump last year. It's it's very flexible, fluid because it's based on sales tax. We can't count on it. And, you know, it's not our fault, but it's the situation that we're in and it needs to be fixed. And I I I agree not blaming on a position. And with the the shared revenue formula, the way it is, this has been happening. We saw the graphs for a while and it's escalated since COVID pretty tremendously.
Uh, Tom, looks like you might wanna say something.
I I think the the comments we've heard here tonight, it's, this is, this, there was an inevitability. About the situation that has been presented to us. That eventually, in an inflationary economy, you're not gonna be able to outgrow. You know, that that the whole the whole circumstance they've got is is a nor a community would grow fast enough to beat the rising cost. And we're in an inflationary economy and and we're just not gonna be able to do it. It just, it isn't there. I think we have to do this. I think Carly makes an excellent point that there needs to be fixes fixes. Um, but the only option that we have, the only tool we have, is to go to a referendum. And uh, you know, from this standpoint, you know, what are we gonna do for twenty twenty five? This, this is what, if if you don't like this, you're gonna really hate it in twenty six. And you're gonna really hate it in twenty seven. And and I think that's 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 just sort of the the scenario. We have to do this. I I support the resolution. I I think we need to move forward on it, but it's, it is. It is an interim fix until we can get the real budget and the real needs that our community needs, so.
Uh, Tim.
Then I would just add that this is also at the tail end of significant budget work. That's been done over the last few years to eliminate a lot of expenses that we can afford to eliminate. And now we're getting into, you know, the fat's been cut and it's, it it's, it gets harder.
Okay, um, so I think we can move on to uh item two then. Uh, before us, which is a resolution number twenty four dash fifteen, direction for the twenty twenty five draft budget. And plan for short term use of general fund reserve for twenty twenty five operating expenditure. Staff recommendation motion to approve as presented.
I'll make that motion.
All right, Tom and Tim, further discussion. Jason.
Just wanna say thank you to Martin and other staff members who put this together well done um in a tough situation.
Just uh, could I add some film?
Please.
I'll just say that we'll see what happens when we get into the budget too. I mean, there is a chance things could be rosier. This, this, so you're not committing to approving a budget. You're you're basically approving to give direction to how we're gonna put this thing together and then we'll see what it looks like and then maybe some things can change.
Thanks for that sliver of light.
Albeit thin. Okay, uh, sorry. Uh, so we have a motion a second. Further discussion?
Just wanna.
Oh, please.
I guess the, this, this is, this is not a happy situation.
No.
I think I'd want the staff and the people who work for the village to know that we support them a hundred percent. Um, regardless of the role, regardless of what they're doing. Um, I think we've got some great people on staff. Um, this is not a direction I'd like to go in that support of them. But it it is, it it gets, keeps as many people and as much as we can doing it the best we can, so.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. Thank you all. Moving on, uh, let's see, eight D referendum to exceed levy limits. Again, we'll begin with discussion.
So I I think this is a little bit more open ended. Um, just because I think, you know, obviously, we had the presentation here tonight, got some additional information. Um, I think, you know, I have a resolution here kind of outlining. Either moving ahead with something, you know, we can select a date or not to select a date. We can set direction on the different types of things that we wanna do in relation to uh, you know, moving forward with a referendum. Whether it's a public relations firm or, you know, we talked about a staffing study or workload analysis work in departments and things like that. So I I think this item to me is a little bit less certain from my perspective, um, without some further direction. Uh, in terms of date and in terms of what we wanna, we wanna accomplish. I think the only thing that I would add is that um, I I think for sure, a first step. Absent any other conversation and and ideas and things that the board can collectively agree on. Is is the PR and communications firm is probably one of the most important things that we can do at this early stage. Uh, is to get somebody on and to help us understand how we need to start selling this. And um, what we should start focusing on as part of of the referendum.
Jason.
I I am definitely in favor of that, Martin. It it heartened me to know that we're not just three months out in the shotgun referendum. Uh, style that the other group was, uh, the first example was. But the um, we we don't have sixteen months to work with either. We're right right in between. So I think um focusing on that um, in in communicating with the village, everything that we've explained here tonight. Because most people, um, I'm guessing, don't watch the YouTube village board meetings. I mean, they're not thousands of views and so, um, what's that?
Hundreds.
Hundreds, eh, um, but communicating through tax bill, uh, tax bills, through water bills. We have time for that. Um, I am curious. Yeah, um, I know we do not want to put the quote unquote, cause I don't see blame here. But have people put the blame on the lieutenant position. However, it does seem to me like determining um. The creation of that position did push the issue a little bit forward. Is how do we determine what is going to be supported by this referendum and for how long? What is our process in doing that? In my mind, as I understand it, and I may be incorrect, but it is going to be a large part of a public safety. Style referendum. Um, but I mean, that that is based on gut opinion. How, what what's the best way to do, how are you looking to determine that, Martin? Um, how are we look, not you, how are we looking to to determine that? I'm sorry.
Uh, I think, you know, you, we've given, been given a few examples here and we've talked about some others last week. But I think that's. But I think that's part of the question that the board has to sort of sit with and try to figure out is, you know, we talked about Fitchburg, they've done quite an extensive survey, done some community engagement to kind of try to hone in and have some data that supports sort of your gut feeling that public safety would be the selling thing. You know, is that something we need to be, be doing? Is, you know, what does that look like? And so for, you know, I talked to my counterpart in Fitchburg last week about this a little bit. They brought on, the, the first thing they did is they brought on the PR firm. Then they decided they really wanted to do some pretty robust community engagement. They actually brought on a second firm to do a survey specifically. That, that was their specialty. And so they did the survey work as well. And so now they're kind of bringing all that stuff back, uh, to figure out exactly what we heard tonight, which is mo- molding the, the public survey and the community engagement with the financial piece, with the PR piece, with the timing piece. And that's where they are right now. And they're deciding whether they want to go in August or November, basically. So there's all that work. And now for them too, their, their community engagement work was supported by a staffing study that they did last year. So they had a lot of data that they could use with, from that, that then they could put into the survey of sort of the different variations of staffing that could be used to go to, to referendum with. So it sounds like the number one supported option was eight officers plus a handful of other positions. Well, they identified that all those positions through a staffing study, which they took that data from and put into that survey. So do we need to go to that level? I don't know. Maybe, you know, if that's something that we think we need? Or do we think we are somewhere on the spectrum towards Cambridge where we think we know what we need? But we'll maybe do some more engagement and some more PR? Or is there more study work that we, we feel like we need to do?
Oh, okay. Uh, Lynn and then Tim.
So I guess, uh, to move it along, like the conversation along, I definitely think a PR firm is a good starting point. And my gut is that a staffing study is helpful. I thought what Kayla mentioned, we should keep top of mind, which is that transparency piece. I don't necessarily know that getting surveyed as a community member about how to be sold some. We are where we are. And I think if we come to our community and say, this is what we need, I would hope that our community would, would be able to understand that. I think a s- staffing study helps us say that more transparently. Less so than a survey of sort of what makes you check yes on a box, in my opinion. I don't know anything about this stuff, but I would say PR firm first is a great idea and then see what they think about a staffing study.
I guess my thought is that, um, we have to think in terms of this referendum not passing and understand what village finances look like over, say, a five-year period. If it didn't pass and what we'd have to do in order to then get within the constraints that that would put upon us. And I would think we do that in really broad strokes in terms of, well, we'd need a 15% cut in parks and 10% in public safety and et cetera, and sort of lay that out. And I think that ultimately then becomes help in terms of selling why we need it, because this is what it would look like without it. We know right now, we have a, a forecast that shows deficits beginning, what is it, 26, I think?
Next year, no?
Yeah. And I think we need to understand what that looks like to be able to then say why we need it, because we're filling those specific gaps. But, but I think it would help if we had an analysis that showed us what we'd have to do to get to that.
Carleen.
I'm gonna echo that. Loss aversion is a very big motivator for most folks. They don't want to lose what they have, our rights, freedoms, protections. We don't want to lose them. And so loss aversion in marketing is a really strong tool.
Amanda.
Yeah, I think that feels like a conversation with the PR firm, because I think we're talking about selling, you know, like the carrot versus the stick, right? And they both might be important motivators in different situations. But I don't, I think it's early to, to get into that. I think the PR firm would help us a lot in deciding whether we need the stick, maybe the carrot's enough, right?
Jason.
So, um, you, you, you've mentioned staffing study a couple of times. I have no idea what goes into that and how long it takes and how much time it would take for our current village staff to engage in that. Because there's never enough time in the day as it is. And while this, that is important, if we're not going to get it till the end of the day or late, late, too late in the process, um, where it's not helpful, I don't want to ask the staff to do something that's, um, not helpful. So, so what goes into a staffing study and about how long does it take to, to do that?
I'll just, uh, I'll use the Fitchburg example, because that's the most relevant. They hired a firm to do that for them and it took them about eight months to complete that. Now, obviously they're three times as large as we are. So there's maybe a little bit less to do here. So maybe it's, you know, a less than eight months, but I would expect at least six months.
Okay. I think we could move on to the, uh, resolution part. And, uh, I have a question. I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of the resolution in front of me, but does that specify, uh, hiring the public relations firm in that resolution or should we be adding that to our motion?
So right now it's, it's a little bit of in a draft. I had a section in there that's highlighted, uh, that just says, if we're, if we're prepared to set a date for a referendum and we're working backwards from one, we can certainly add that in. And then it goes on to list, uh, different actions that the board wants to take to support. So one is obviously using elders to help support the financial advice, uh, advice that we need. And then the second one is, um, hiring a, a public relations and communications firm.
Okay, thank you, Candy.
So I think, uh, you know, if you want to set a date, we could add that in. Otherwise, we can take that out. Or we can add some items in there if there's some other actions that we also want to take right now, uh, into, into that list there.
That cleared everyone? Okay, uh, who was first there? It's like, okay, we'll go with Tom and then, uh, Jason.
I guess I would, I'm looking at the, 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 uh, resolution. I would remove the insert desired referendum date and put that into as part of, like a step three as far as identifying and considering the, uh, possible dates as part of an action that based on, on what we learn and, and develop as far as with the public relations firm. I guess as far as other actions and, and things, we should have some, a sort of, there could be other things. So survey, I mean, those are things that are going to come out of the discussions with the public relations firm. I guess have it open, have it open for some other actions.
Jason.
And, um, I was going to recommend, and I, I, it's fine if it goes in number three, but that we name, especially since it says tentative target date, it's not saying definite. But I think we need to put a date in there to keep, uh, keep our feet to the fire to keep working on this. I believe it's April 1st, 2025. Which is, is kind of what we, it, it is what we've discussed. And since it says tentative target date, if we decide to change it, we can change it.
Okay. Uh, Carleen.
I would just put April 2025 in there because November is too soon and there's no 2025 November election. And if we don't do April 2025, then we're talking way out, like April 2026. And April 2025 will be a high turnout election because it is a Supreme Court election. And there'll also be, you know, just all the regular things on the ballot at that point. So I would just make that decision.
Okay. Amanda.
I agree with Carleen. I think we should just set the date and let, again, it can change. But I think that's our target. I mean, our only realistic other option to be able to make ends meet would be to do it for this November. And I think a lot of us don't feel prepared for that. So let's just put in the spring, April 2025.
Okay, I'll, I'll read, uh, the copy from the agenda and then, um, I think that whoever might make, want to make that motion might, A, indicate that includes the, uh, public relations, side in and public relations, using elders.
I think the only, sorry, Phil. I think the only thing you have to do is just add the April.
Okay.
The spring, April election in that highlighted area, I think you can do a motion to approve as presented with April 25 as the referendum.
Okay. So resolution number 24-15, direction for the, pardon me, I'm a line ahead. Anyway, resolution number 24-16, authorizing planning and activities for future referendum to exceed property tax levy limits for operating expenditures. Looking for a motion and Carleen and Jason.
With the date of April 2025.
Thank you. And you're good with that?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Further discussion. Hearing that. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you all very much. Uh, let's see. 8, 8E. Review bids for 2024 surface resurfacing maintenance. Contract B, asphalt payment replacement, storm sewer and concrete pavement at the Public Works Garage Lot. Pavement replacement at three Village Park base, basketball courts. Pavement placement at several locations on the Rotary Trail and trail placement, pavement replacement at Village Parks. And potential action to accept the base bid, supplemental bid and alternate bid and award the contract to pay in a dollar in the amount of $559,614. Staff recommendation motion to approve. Amanda and we'll say, Tim. Any further on this, Lauren, or?
Well, I can't really speak tonight, so I'll keep it very brief. The one thing I wanted to note, and it is in the memo, is that the prices that we've seen for asphalt paving this year have been unusually low. And, um, there are a couple of reasons we think this might be happening. But the bottom line is that the biz that we got for all of this work are, are very, very good. And so we are recommending moving ahead with every piece of it, including the replacement of the entirety of the Keller Alpine bike path, because we likely won't see these prices again.
Great. Looks like we're saving about 140,000.
Almost 200.
Yeah, I was gonna let somebody else say that if they wanted to.
Okay, so.
190,000, right?
A lot. Let's see, we're saving a lot. Uh, so we have a motion, a second. Further discussion. Tom.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, no, I think we have one. Yep. Amanda and?
Tim. Yeah, you're right.
Okay, no problem. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Lauren. Item 8F, update regarding innovation grant, innovation planning grant programs. Well, maybe we'll come back to that. There'll be a 30-second recess.
We'll just watch Martin more.
Okay, uh, innovation grant.
All right. So, uh, yeah, this is just an update. When we did the, uh, village board strategic plan last summer, uh, we had a item in there that was related to intergovernmental cooperation. And it was, it was a little bit broad, but one of the things that we identified in there was that there's this program that was created as part of the shared revenue bill, actually, last year. That is going to be for encouraging consolidations of services and partnerships and the like with, uh, different local governments. And, uh, so that's the innovation grant and then an innovation planning grant. And, uh, based on, uh, if you have some sort of, I guess we don't really know the details yet and that's part of purpose of this presentation. But it's assumed that, um, that there will be some grants that will be given based on efficiencies and cost savings that occur as part of these partnerships. And so I just wanted to make sure that I gave an update to all of you that, that we don't know any of the details yet. The programs haven't been created yet. But, uh, the DOR did put in for an administrative rule earlier this spring. And they said it's going to take them 200 hours to create the program. So whatever that means, uh, but I assume that it'll be sometime this year, probably towards the end of this year, that we'll know more about that program. And as soon as we know, then we can start seeing if there's anything that might be out there that we could take advantage of.
Okay. Questions, comments for Martin? Okay. Uh, that includes a, uh, fire districts working together, an area that's of particular interest to me, so I just thought I'd mention that. Let's see. Thank you, Martin. Item nine, new business, items for discussion of possible action. A village board community outreach plan. Lynn.
Yeah, so I have been bugging Martin for the last couple of weeks. I have been picking some pet projects and he's been gracious enough to sit with me and dream up some new ideas for my time on the board. And this is one of them. So this isn't anything novel. It's just the idea of putting together more of a concerted effort to allow village board members, village staff to represent the village in, um, official capacity at, um, community events. So you'll see in the program, there is an outreach coordinator, essentially a point person that can organize, purchase, schedule, communicate to different events. That would be a position that would just be filled sort of on our reorganizational meeting every year. Phil could designate somebody, our village president could designate somebody to, to do that. I'd be happy to fill it, unless someone else would like to fill it. I'd be happy to let you all have, um, first go at that. The calendar, I am proposing a trimester idea. So essentially, um, looking at the summer, looking at the fall, winter, and then looking at the spring, putting together sort of a, a calendar, bringing it to the board, getting that approved. And then, um, uh, people would sign up. Last minute requests or additions to that calendar could absolutely happen. And we would just work to add that to the calendar. Promotion materials, uh, just, uh, the first go, go out will be, need a couple of things and then just things to kind of give away. We're all at these events, you know, you know, it's just sort of the thing for people to walk away with. Sign-up coordination is online, preparation for events. So there would be sort of like a materials box, it'd get picked up here at the village hall. You'd go to the event. When you're done, you bring it back to the village hall. This is not anything very, you know, novel or exciting. Purchasing of materials, so you'll see in the memo, I put together a budget. In order to stick with sustainability, I've selected two different vendors that have sustainable materials. It's one of the sustainability's plans is to encourage purchasing of sustainable materials. So you could choose or I could choose whatever you want. This is the proposed 2024 summer calendar. Again, we're probably all going to most of these things anyway. So you'd simply be standing by a Village of Oregon table. I think that's all pretty self-explanatory. There's the purchasing. You are welcome to give me ideas or feedback if there's something you'd like different. As far as promotional materials go. The shirts number is a minimum. You can't order less than 49 shirts. So that's how I got to that number. If you scroll down, Jeff, the thing that I wanted to mostly get your feedback on, um, on this are sort of these guidelines. So Martin and I have tentatively put these together. We have a question for Derek, um, but I'll go through these really quickly. So coordinator would be announced annually by the president, events for trimesters. You'd be representing the village of an, at an event. So, uh, this is not for individual campaigning purposes. I think that's important, especially when we hit the spring trimester, that if you are, you know, up for reelection or campaigning in any kind of election. up for reelection or campaigning in any kind of election, even the fall, I suppose for sure. Just making sure that we're not using it for individual campaigning purposes. Doesn't restrict you from going independently and campaigning yourself for sure. And then outreach materials, oh, like, so whatever you'd like on the table. So I'm thinking like the green box poster, the tree terrace application. If we want to do like a levy limit handout, I think that would be maybe interesting to have at the table to sort of help educate folks about what we mean. Anything can be sent for that. The question I have for Derek on this is if the, if we go ahead with this and we're up. So the original intent, sorry I'm bouncing around. The original intent was though that community members could come and talk to us as opposed to necessarily having to come to a meeting, right? We've heard that feedback quite a few times, it's difficult. And we're already at these events. And so I, I would really love to see the community feel like they can connect to us, especially if we're talking about a referendum in the next couple of years. I think letting them to come and talk to us, I think is important. However, if a community member comes to talk to a board member, how would we legally get that information to the board without? I don't know what the word I'm, um, open meeting laws, like without wading into those waters? Would we need like an agenda item where?
No, I mean, this is something you can always provide one way communication to your fellow board members, right? So if it's a memo, let's provide it in email. What you want to avoid is having any conversations via email that start to look like meetings, right? If there's discussions about topics that would otherwise be under the board's purview, that have been taking place by email, that's potentially an illegal meeting if it wasn't properly noticed, right?
Okay.
But if it's merely just Lynn reporting, you know, what she heard from citizens, that's fine. You can also send it to Martin and Martin can disseminate to the board members as well.
Oh, okay. So I guess I'm, we're looking for questions, ideas, tweaks? If you don't like it at all?
Jason, I think your hand was up.
Two things, first of all, I love this Lynn. And I'm fully in support of it. Second of all, do we need to worry about, and this is Derek and Candy, potential quorums? If there's four of us there and would the coordinator be in charge of, for instance, notifying Candy so she can put forth a notice?
That's how I would see it, for sure.
Yes.
One of the things I whispered to Martin.
Candy, would the schedule be enough?
I would take the schedule, yeah. But if there's any last minute stuff, you just need, would need to. And I'm, I'm assuming that I probably would have, you know, quite a lot of correspondence with this person too because I'm probably gathering the information that they're gonna need. We'd probably be in constant communication.
Carleen, it's next.
I too think this is a really good idea, Lynn, and I love it that you volunteered to be the first outreach coordinator. I've planned a lot of events and this is like the typical event box thing, right? You have an event box. And I just make the suggestion that to avoid that, that we just say maximum three board members to staff any one of these events and then we, we, we avoid the quorum issue. It's not that other people wouldn't, couldn't attend the event independently, but they wouldn't be staffing the Village of Oregon table or booth or whatever, and then we avoid quorum. And I can't imagine that we'd ever need more than three of us.
I think if you're all still there, I would notice it as a potential.
But like we were all at the, at the concession stand opening, did you notice that as a quorum thing?
It's easy enough to do.
It's just a simple notice.
Yeah.
And I'd rather be safe.
If anything, it's free P R because people know we're going.
Help promote the event. I too love this and I appreciate you bringing it forward. My question is, would each event just be kind of open ended, whatever people want to talk about? Or would we come with an agenda that, you know, this time we're going to talk about taxes? This time we're going to talk about public safety or what was your thought there?
Right, so the idea was that it would be very open ended in that the table would have materials, very similar to when you walk into village hall, if you turn, there's a big pamphlet sheet. So just have materials for residents and then have conversations. If someone comes and wants to talk about the composting program, you can talk about sustainability, you could talk about composting. If someone wants to ask about their water bill or something like that, you can sort of adjust based on what a person coming up to talk to us would want to talk about.
Let's see. Pardon me, I'm behind in my notes. Amanda.
I also think this is a great idea. Initially, when I was looking at it though, I, I had two things. And I, I don't know how the rest of you feel about it, I'm happy to be overridden, this is just my thoughts. But I don't know how valuable getting like a pen from the villages. Like I know it's nice to have giveaways, eh, like that doesn't get me very excited. So I don't know, maybe there's something else we could give away or maybe skip it because budgets are tight. I mean, you know, like just have our stuff out there, right? Whatever, we can talk about that. And the other thing I was thinking of, it'd be nice if we could do sort of a branding, like a fun thing with the shirts. I love the, the idea of having official logo, it's, it'll be an official shirt, but doing something like Got Questions? You know, like Got Milk kind of ad play or something or like making them stand out and be noticed by people as opposed to something that blends in with the crowd, like, like a shirt that kind of jumps out and is fun, like hey, come talk to us, you know, like I'm a village official, ask me how. Or you know, like just, we can talk about what that looks like too, but just something attention grabbing.
Tom, did you have your?
Well, I guess I was, I was going to speak in, in support of this, this in general. I did want to point out that we recently had an event where, where we were in the public and we were there at the concession stands with the, and I had a great time. It was, I thought it was a well received event, I, nice remarks from, from Phil. And I think the whole point though is, is being present and being visible. I guess I wouldn't want to come with an agenda, but you would want to have the senior center newsletter and you would want to have all those pieces that, that we routinely provide, but have them more available in a different format. Some, some public safety kinds of things, literature available, having it routinely there and just having it for people. It's conversation starters, I guess is what I would see them as. I'm, I'm somewhat ambivalent about ink pens. But certainly I like the idea of a shirt and having a kind of a, a more of a, an organized presentation. So, so that here's the people that are doing it this day, so that, that sort of makes some sense to me. I like the idea of being there and being visible. I'm, you're right, I'm going to be at all these events almost anyway. Is it any big deal for me to move behind a bench and stand there for a couple of minutes? It's like, it's fine, so.
I would add my wholehearted endorsement and I appreciate the initiative. I think it's a great idea. As for as materials, I would suggest name tags, ideally with, with lanyards. I think people could use them in other, other things besides just these type of things. And if you get shirts, get shirts with collars, no T shirts.
Shirts with collars, got it.
No T shirts.
Yeah, it's a little more official looking.
Yeah.
Shirt with collar.
Yeah.
I will also say as far as funding goes, we do have a little budget. The board does, so that's where Martin thought we could pull this money from.
Oh, slush fund. Okay, so Jeff, is this, you know, ready to adopt or you're gonna, you're gonna have to write this?
I would say based on just some of the feedback and what we, what we also have for our Village Board handbook, I would suggest that we put it into like a policy.
Yeah.
Form and then adopt it officially.
Yeah.
Into the handbook and then make it true.
So it sounds like we could entertain a motion to have asked Martin and Steph to do that. Owen and Tim and Jason. Further discussion. Lynn, please.
My only question is if the first proposed event is June seventh, that's two weeks. Should we not assume, well, also then the eighth, which is the public art fair? Can we get those done? Can, can we do this in time?
Yeah, I think you can, yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't see any issue with that. I mean, I think we can walk and chew gum at the same time. I think, I think we can get the official policy put together and I think we could still organize June seventh and June eighth.
Okay, great.
Just do a little bit more ad hoc.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm gonna ask you to step in here.
All right. So ten is reports of village officers, department heads and consultants. These items are informational only, no action by the village board will be taken. See the reports in the meeting packet. Ten A is village administrator report. Any questions on that? That is in the packet. Ten B is the finance director report. It's got building permits, impact fees and connection fees collected through April twenty twenty four. Any questions? Carleen.
I was just gonna comment, there's a lot more single family dwelling permits this year in the first four months than last year. And a few more, it looks like of remodels.
Okay, moving on, ten C is the police chief report. And report on April twenty seventh Drug Takeback Day. Chief, do you want to add anything?
Sure, I'll just briefly speak to it. So we are a part of the Drug Takeback Program. So obviously we have the box that sits in our lobby, secured to the floor, locked, but accessible to our community when our building is open for business. And then we host two days a year, an event on a weekend for one day where the community can come in and also leave medications with us. On April twenty seventh, from nine AM to noon, Lieutenant Schab and Rudy gave up their Saturday morning, thankfully, to come in and facilitate that retrieval of those medications. We collected three boxes of medications for disposal, which was sixty seven pounds. That's actually quite a bit of a decrease to what we normally see. But I think that is definitely because people are more aware that we have the box in our lobby that is available to them at any time. And we would prefer that because then they're getting rid of the medications quicker instead of waiting for these two times a year. So yeah, since October of twenty twenty three, taking the sixty seven pounds combined with everything we've collected over time, since October, it's three hundred and ninety four pounds of medications. That could be from your opiates to your common cold medication, you name it, everything comes in. Shockingly enough, we've actually gotten a firearm through our box once before, that was interesting. But it's a, we, we appreciate the partnership with Safe Communities and Oregon Cares. Happy to take any questions on it, but just informational.
Looks like no questions, I'm gonna hand it back to Phil.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Amanda. Item eleven, announcements of miscellaneous business. A amount announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events and miscellaneous business. Village Board members may provide brief statements, but no discussion or action of the body shall occur. Oh, let's start with the Village Board members. Carleen.
I just want to thank Chief Pakenkoff for being the guest of the Oregon Area Progressives at our April Open Mic along with a woman from Project Respect. They gave a really good talk, well received, got a lot of views on Facebook Live as well on human trafficking, a lot of good questions and I think people learned a lot, I know I certainly did, so thank you very much.
Just want to give a shout out to Public Works and Leanne and everyone who's involved this weekend for the opening of J C Community Park. It was a really well run event, beautiful weather and a really great part of our community now.
Tom.
Give a shout out to the, the, all the village employees who showed up to clean out the village offices. It was very fulfilling to tear rip, pile drawers out of, out and throw them in the dumpster and watch the in loader come down and crush them. That was a very fulfilling kind of activity. Really appreciated the opportunity to come and, and work with the guys, enjoyed that.
I just would also compliment on the, the J C Park event. It was just really well done and people really seemed to be enjoying themselves. And so I think that was just a great community event.
It was a nice mix.
Yep.
The kids get fit.
Yep. Candy.
And Jeff and I just want to thank, well, actually all the staff wants to thank you as the elected officials for helping us clean out village hall.
Yes. Okay, anybody else? Okay, let's just go down, annual dividend payment from liability insurer total twelve thousand, one hundred and ninety one. I think that was from our league.
Sorry, I just wanted to add this on because I know we have several new board members or newer board members you may not know, so we're, the village's liability insurer is a mutual insurance and they're specifically to municipalities. And so obviously it's mutual, we're an owner of, of the company. And so we get a dividend check if they, if they meet their performance marks that they set every year. So typically that looks like about this amount every year, somewhere between ten thousand and fifteen thousand dollars for the last few years. And we do budget that as a revenue. So we do expect to get at least a little bit of something from this, but it's nice to get that little bit of money.
Okay, and then two, Department of Justice Specialized Training Grant Funds in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars awarded to the Oregon Police Department for below one hundred training. Chief, anything to add on that?
Yeah, just real quick, so grants, I'm sure it's with every department. With us, it's been very challenging, very competitive trying to get any sort of grant. Sergeant E House is our, primarily our grant person. She's been putting in for a lot, unfortunately we've been denied quite a bit. For one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, seems like a drop in the bucket, but very well worth it. This was a training I wanted to bring to our staff. I had it within my first two years of law enforcement and I still remember it twenty two years later. It's pivotal to keeping our staff safe out on the road. I pulled together some data and put it in the memo here. The, the philosophy of this training is to keep the deaths of law enforcement under one hundred a year. That hasn't happened, I don't think ever in my career, which is really unfortunate. Covid obviously took a really hard hit on all first responders, including law enforcement. So you're seeing that in my memo, seven hundred and eighteen deaths in twenty one, two hundred and seventy four in twenty two and a hundred and thirty seven in twenty three. What this training addresses is fast driving. What it does, what it, what risks the officer is put in then, what the community's put in. Then also just simply the best, how, how many of these deaths are firearm related and also seatbelt related. So it's, it's a very humbling training, a lot of stories are told and it resonates, you know, pretty hard with many of the officers. So very pleased to have this training coming, we probably will implement it in the next couple of months. One of the caveats is we do have to invite outside agencies as well, which we're happy to do. We'll be moving forward with that soon.
Thank you, Chief. Item three, Village A A two credit rating issued by Moody's Investor Service maintained.
Yeah, so the credit rating report is in the packet, so we approved the twenty twenty four note in April. So there's a lot of work that happens after that with Lisa and myself and Ellers. And one of the things that happens is we get our credit rating from a credit rating, rating agency, Moody's. And so they've issued this and we've maintained our A A two. It's basically the best credit rating you can get for a community this size. You can see some of the things that they look at in the report. They really like that we're doing a lot of the long range planning that we've. They really like that we're doing a lot of the long-range planning that we've been doing over the last few years. They really like a lot of the financial management policies that we've put in place. They see that we're not just making decisions because we allowed to do them, we were making decisions based on a long-term plan. You know, you can see some of the things in there that they mark as challenges. You know, they see a lot of the, the debt that we're taking on for capital investments, but they like that we have a plan, that we're, that we're following that plan. And then the other thing that they like is we got some strong reserves and that we have a, a plan in place for, for using some of those reserves this year and, and beyond. So, so it's a good thing. And then the other thing I was just going to add on to this too is that we did have the sale of the debt last week. It went about as expected from the pre-sale report that was given by Dave Ferris a couple meetings ago. So we'll have an actual sale date report, outcome report at the next meeting.
Thank you. And four, outdoor movie night Friday, June 7th at 7:00 PM and September 13th at 6:00 PM. J C Community Park, Songs of Summer Concert Series in Waterman Triangle Park begins at 5:30 every Tuesday, July 16th through August 27th. Okay, please, Amanda.
How does, like, when, how do you find out what the movie is?
I believe it's Barbie.
Barbie's the first one, and then the new Wonka movie is the September one. So we have all the licenses for the movies, and I think we'll be buying our own equipment so we can run events multiple times and, nice.
We'll get there early.
What's the screen? What are we projecting it to?
That's a kind of an inflatable, like, what is it, 15 or 20 foot?
At least 16 diagonal.
So we'll pray for, pray for some calm weather and stuff, so it doesn't end up in Stoughton or anything like that. Yeah, it's, it's really neat. I think it's going to be fun, and we're hoping outfield of Diamond 2, so we can use the concession stand to pop free popcorn and all that kind of stuff for.
That'll be fun.
That's great.
Okay, 11B, future agenda items. None. Item 12, closed session business items for discussion, possible action under Wisconsin statutes 19.85, sub-1, sub-2, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investment in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Attendance is limited to the village board and its discretion, unnecessary staff, other officers, or other individuals whose presence necessary for the business at hand. A, deliberate the investment of public funds, purchase of public properties, and related negotiation strategy for future economic growth and expansion of the village. Under Wisconsin statutes 19.85, 1C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government, governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Attendance is limited to the village board and at its discretion, unnecessary staff. B, village administrator appointment agreement. Looking for motion to move into closed section, and we'll say Jason and Amanda. So we'll call.
Manki?
Yes.
Van Kampen?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
And Bashan?
Yes.
Thank you, we are in closed session.